Yes, I'm. Is this working? Can Simon hear us? I don't think Simon can hear us either.
We just checked that a few minutes ago. Simon? He's muted.
I can hear you.
Yeah. All right, we're going to get started with the meeting tonight. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
All right, first tonight is inviting Pastor Jim Hood from Jersey Village Church of Christ for invocation and pledge.
Let us bow. Our Heavenly Father, we offer thanks this evening for the opportunity to gather as a community in the work set before us. We thank you for the grace shown us in Jersey Village and pray that the things we say and the decisions made may result in maintaining a safe and productive citizenry and that all will be in accordance to your divine will. This we ask in your name, amen. Will you join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Next, we're going to move to citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to city council, we heard at this time, in compliance to the Texas Open Meetings Act unless there's a subject matter of the comment is on the agenda of the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policies. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments. And first is Andy Hunzicker.
Good evening. My name is Andy Hunzicker. I live at 1581 Ford Juneau Lane. I'm here to talk about SB 1852, Senate Bill 1852. What I'd like to know, out of order or whatever, do our patrol cars, do all the officers carry patrol rifles with them? Second of all, do all the patrol cars have the officers that are carrying patrol rifles, do they have a go-bag with them that has extra ammunition, tourniquets, first aid equipment, et cetera? And the next thing I would like to know is, are they trained with them for what's in SB 1852, which I'm sure all of you know what it is. I don't have to explain that Senate bill to you. But in that bill, the police department, fire department, and EMS are supposed to train together. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to know if they are training together. And if they did train together, are they also training with Cyfer School District Police? Are they training with Precinct Four Police? Because if something happens, you know there's going to be a tsunami of blue that comes rolling into Jersey Village, and are you prepared for that? I'll talk about it later at another date, give you something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Chief, can you take a second to explain how we are prepared for those types of events?
This is for an active attack situation, one just what happened in Minnesota, one that happened down the valley at the schools. But not only did it happen in schools, it also happened like Home Depot. I don't know about Spex, but Home Depot and other stores like that have had massive shootings. And are we prepared for that?
Thank you, Andy. So for anybody that's not aware, SB 1852 required officers to be prepared to have educational requirements for active shooter incidents. Chief?
Yeah, so in response to that, one of the things that we did right off the bat was we took that legislation really, really seriously. I sent several guys to the Alert Center in San Marcos, Texas. I had four guys that are trained instructors. We've had, I want to say last summer, we had seven courses that we put on. We trained with folks from Precinct Four. Our fire department was there. Our fire marshal's office was there as well. We've done a lot of, lot of planning and a lot of, lot of training there. We've trained at all of our schools that are here in Jersey Village. As we expand on that moving forward, we're looking at incorporating the exterior response to active shooter events, which is ERACE, which is another course that's put on through the Alert Center. And so annually, we'll do some type of active shooter response. We've purchased equipment to do actual simulation training for those, for those events, along with, one of the things that we're looking at is expanding our, making sure that every officer does have a patrol rifle issued to them. It is a request that I put in for a budget for this next year. We do have several officers that carry a rifle at this time. It's their personally owned rifle. We've also integrated in with that self-help buddy training, and every officer has a trauma kit that's been assigned to them. And so we've done pretty much everything that we can to ensure that we are sound-minded and ready for, for any event like that.
Thank you, Chief.
I didn't bring the Senate bill that just passed this session, but there's some more that just came out, and I'm not prepared to talk about it because I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, so I serve on the Texas Police Chiefs Legislative Committee. So we vet a lot of these bills. That has been a big topic this year. The Uvalde Act, Uvalde Strong Act that just came out, that's legislation that's going to get passed, that's going to integrate even more. It's going to require public information officer training on an annual basis. It's going to provide us with ensuring that we're doing roundtable discussions, working with our school districts and things like that, and then after-action readiness and things of that.
I was going to ask you, have you done any?
I'm fully aware of that Senate bill that just got passed, and we're making coordinated efforts right now to ensure that we're.
And you're working on tabletop?
Yeah, the tabletop exercise is, is a requirement of that.
Right.
And so we will be working with Cyfer ISD. There's some other emergency management folks that have to be involved with that, along with the county level. So there's a lot of logistics that are still getting worked out with it. And it just, I mean, it's, it's fresh, fresh off the press, that legislation. And so we will be prepared, as we were prepared whenever the, the alert training was pushed out.
And I'll come back every month and talk to you about it.
Andy, thank you for your time. We're going to.
I know.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Very thorough answer, and I will actually take a moment to thank Cyfer ISD. They have started cooperating with local fire and police departments at a much larger scale, and it is very much appreciated. Ron D'Amico.
My name is Ron D'Amico. I live at 15202 Lakeview Drive with my wife Monica. We also own the property at 15522 Jersey Drive, which the city is attempting to seize without compensation. I purchased this lot from the city located in Ters 3 for the purpose of building a new home. After spending tens of thousands of dollars meeting my obligation to build an elevated home, the city abandoned its Ters commitment, which was the mutual consent from my purchase, and failed to uphold its obligations. We met with the city manager six months before the construction deadline, and he made it clear buyouts were no longer an option and that we should do what we need to do. When I informed him that we had a buyer wanting to build a new home on the lot, he said it was unfair for me to profit from and prevented the sale. I offered to sell the lot back to the city for exactly what I paid so the city could profit, but he declined. I assume he disclosed this conversation to you. The city claims I failed to meet my obligations and seeks to enforce without compensation a reverter clause in the deed to take the property back. We are vigorously contesting this in court. Some of you weren't on this council when Ters 3 was created. I don't know if you've been fully briefed on the background or whether you have all the facts. I also don't know if my offers have been fully communicated to you since nothing in the posted agendas mentions this lawsuit or your consideration of my offers. In 2021, when the city pitched Ters to Jersey Drive residents as a way to ensure new homes would be built above flood levels, we were explicitly told that homes on Jersey Drive would not qualify for elevation, and rebuilding or moving was the only option to get out of the flood zone. That's what we were sold and we, and many agreed to. This is clearly stated in the project and financing plan that city council approved, which is also available on the city's website. The introduction alone explains that the Ters was formed for buyouts because obtaining elevation grants is too lengthy, while the remainder of this plan outlines funding plans for buyouts through 2028. In 2023, without warning, transparency, or discussion, the city and manager announced to the Ters Board that buyouts were no longer budgeted and the city was switching to elevations. That's precisely what we had been promised would not happen. In fact, the home at 15317 Jersey Drive in Ters 3 is currently being elevated. I entered this process in good faith. My legal counsel reviewed the warranty deed and concluded that the reverter clause does not permit the city to seize private property without compensation under these facts. You sued me, and we filed a response, which I also have here tonight. Your own attorney read our response and responded that she was unaware of a Ters or that the Ters 3 plan even existed. That is inexcusable and a waste of taxpayer money on unnecessary legal fees. Your lawsuit is based on incomplete information, flawed assumptions, and a staggering lack of transparency. Taxpayer funds are being spent on a legally weak case that could have been avoided had the city manager acted responsibly. I made two offers to settle the case eight weeks ago. The first would have the city repurchase the lot below market value enough to cover my costs, allowing the city to resell it at fair market value and still come out ahead. The second would allow me to sell to a third party willing to build within a year. This requires the city to dismiss the lawsuit, as I can't secure a buyer or title policy without, with pending litigation. After prodding your attorney for a response, we got a one-lined email saying the city declines Mr. D'Amico's offer. I don't know if you saw those offers. The bottom line is that the city wants to enforce a clause it has already waived through its own conduct. Legal precedents and case law support our defense as documented in our court findings, filings. If the city manager hadn't blocked the sale, there would likely be a million-dollar property generating tax revenue for Jersey Village. Instead, you're fighting a lawsuit you may not win because the facts don't support the city's position. I urge you to take responsibility for the decisions being made in your name. Please work with me and my attorney to resolve this fairly and legally. That's what leadership requires. My phone number and email address are on the first page of the defendant's response you will receive tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Kurt Beasley.
My name is Kurt Beasley. I live in Window Village. A few of you know me. I work for the largest home builder in America. I build pools. I build rec centers. I build commercial buildings. The last building we built, we finished it like a month ago, and it was 48,000 square feet. It was $240 a foot. So that's $11.5 million for 48,000 feet. So this bond election has got a lot of people upset. I believe the mayor put in the last, what do you call it, newsletter that it was $4 million for the pool. The bond election that failed was for $10 million. It doesn't cost $10 million to build a pool like that. It's right, it's about $4 million. The Jersey Meadows Golf Course, a lot of folks are upset about that as far as the cost. I don't really know what that number was. In the budget, Mr. Fields brought up at the last meeting, that the budget is for $650,000 for the playground. So I don't think we need the playground like our company. When the market changes, we change. So when we have problems budget-wise for the city, we got to determine, do we need to spend the $650? And was it $650? Were there any change orders that bumped it to $800? So that's got some people, you know, concerned. Why do we spend that money when we could use that money somewhere else, right? You know, a lot of times people say the city council doesn't talk prior to the meeting. Well, at the last city council meeting, it was said that the night before y'all had a budget meeting, and y'all discussed it, and well, here we are today. And I guess a lot of people want to know, why weren't the bond elections put up in May? Okay? Some people say, well, there was an emergency. It's emergency bond. We need to build the building right now. Why? You're standing in this room. There's no mold in here, okay? Mr. Hughes brought up, hey, let's do it piece at a time. I think that's a great idea. Another topic was brought up was arbitration. In an AIA contract, in our company, we always check the box for arbitration, okay? It astounded me that the city doesn't do that, because as you know, the courts are backed up. If there's a resolution that needs to be disputed, you're going to be in Harris County Courts forever, right? That's why arbitration is the way to go. And I'm sure a lot of people that I've talked to and people in this room, the fundamental problem is the city manager's office. The city manager's office is there to advise you on what to do, okay? So whenever they hire a company to do architecture on a building such as this, they hired a company that specializes in churches. You know, there's a company called Strand Engineering. We use them all the time. It's a one-stop shop. Civil, structural, architectural. But instead, the city is piecemealing this thing, and there's other options, but you're being advised to do that, and you're being advised poorly, okay? Next question I would ask is, how is the bidding process done? I've spoken about this to Mr. Singleton when he came to our national night out last year. And so ask that question, how is it done? Because the way the city does it is different than the way the public sector does it, okay? The private sector, sorry. So we go through the Houston Business Journal, common practice. That's where you're going to find contractors that'll give you the best price for the best work. The city has another method. City manager, he shared with me a couple of years ago, and I went to it, and it was like 25 or 100 bucks to be a member, and all these other cities did it. So that's what we do because other cities do it. Well, maybe they're doing it wrong. I can tell you, the way we do it is a lot cheaper than the way the city does it. All right? And last two things is, Mr. Fields did ask a bunch of questions at the last meeting. He talked about the budget. I just want to know if you guys have answered that question. A lot of times, this whole bond election thing that came out, you know, there's a big email that came out on a Saturday. Wow. The city does not work on Saturdays, but I think they got the, oh, my gosh moment. There's a big problem, and the city's upset. And obviously, you know that there's petition going around.
Kurt, this time.
Okay. I just hope you don't talk yourselves into a bad deal.
Mitch and I, no, I got a couple of emails, and was actually pretty happy with most of the responses that I got from the mayor's newsletter. And one of them was, where did this $4 million number come from? I've never seen this. This $4 million, $4 million came from Monday, May 12th work session, in which the city manager wrote at length about a lot of these projects. And one of the things that he cited was page 39 out of the Councilman Hensaker concepts that were given to us as part of the bond committee. And you'll find on page 39, it talks about the cost to do the pool, and it bids it at 3.1 million, plus you have to add in the mechanical building and some other minor stuff, and that's where you can get to that 3.6 million. What that does not include is furniture, fixtures, equipment, exhalation allowance, contingencies, design fees, permitting, surveying. All of those costs is what brought that up to 7.6 million. And that was the recommendation from Councilman Hunzicker. A comment was made too about how we go about, and someone to address some of this upfront, and then we'll keep going with citizen comments. The city is required to do a request for qualifications for professional services, and that is designing a pool is a professional service, involves architects and engineers, and we're required to go out for qualifications and select a company to do that. In this case, we were trying to shove through and get something, and that was in 2022? Then we ended up, that bond failed. We went to 2023. We're like, let's do this right, get a bond committee. The bond committee was provided Councilman Hunzicker's qualifications, and they voted on and chose to use that group for the cost estimating. We never got to the part where you start bidding, that is during construction. So you come up with a design, and then you send those designs out for a construction bid. That is when competitive bidding happens. We never got to that part, but that would have absolutely been done. It is required by state law. We would have gone through that process. Next comment is Jim Pulliam.
My name is Jim Pulliam, and I live at 15713 Tinberry Street. Both the JVCC and the JV government need to allow the citizens the opportunity to vote on all costly items like the $20 million for the proposed roads and the $24 million proposed for the city hall complex. Roads in the sewer system need serious work, especially the old sewer system that is made from concrete pipe. Most of the bottoms of that concrete pipe have been dissolved by the sewer water over the years and should have been replaced a long time ago when the problem was discovered. I'm glad the city is pulling away from that ridiculous idea of building the city hall complex on the other side of 290 on Jones Road. That area was designed for industrial businesses and not a city hall, and that area should be returned to industrial businesses. Buying the Baptist church was an excellent idea for the city hall complex, but demolishing those buildings to build a city hall complex is another ridiculous idea. Those buildings are perfectly, perfectly good and could be used as is for the city hall complex, just like the existing church building was used for the, for the city hall and had been used for the city hall for years for meetings. Thank you for your time. You expand working for me and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Eric Canal.
Eric Canal, 15601 Singapore Lane. Good evening, city council. Fahita Fest, May 24th. I just say thank you to the JV police and JV fire department for their incredible planning and attention to detail on the Fahita Fest event. As a JV CERT member, our team was invited to help out in staffing the first aid tent. We were also invited to be at the pre-event meeting to go over emergency details to handle anything that could happen and come up. Watching the professionals of JV fire department plan and organize was an honor and amazing. Watching the professionals of JV Fire Department plan and organize was an honor and amazing to see them work up close. Glad to see Resolution twenty-five-thirty-nine up for renewal. I'm a strong proponent for it and believe that it is an excellent tool for the city to utilize to help attract new businesses to Jersey Village. Tree removal. Today was a tough day. Our forty-foot, fifty-three-year-old Arizona ash tree was removed by the contractor that the city employed as part of the Solomon Australia Street project. The city employee, Tim Nguyen, did a great job communicating with us about the timeline and getting us connected to the contractor. That contractor, Lone Star Tree Service, was compassionate and understanding with our requests of saving a few pieces of the tree. They were fast and efficient. It was difficult to watch the falling of the tree. But we understand that it had to be done. The tree had lived a good life and served our house well. Certificates of obligations. We are in support of the city issuing the COs for the sewer infrastructure and for the improvements to the city campus project. I know and understand that there are, will be tax adjustment to our taxes and I'm prepared to handle it. I actively protest my house evaluation and taxes with HCAD with pretty good success every year. I understand that these COs are about investment in our city's future with which I am firmly on board with. The city has been with a barely functioning city hall for many years and it is time to get the employees a better building. The addition of a rec center will be an enormous plus for the city. And I don't think many residents fully understand how beneficial it will be to each and every one of us as well as the city as a whole. Also, sewer projects. Yes, always fund sewer projects. Thank you.
Hey Garrett, Mark Zehler.
Hi there, I'm Mark Zehler. I live at sixteen-oh-two-two Singapore and have been a resident for a little over thirty years. The first topic I'm going to talk about too is the pool and then the new city hall facility. I, like many residents, although I have a pool, was in favor of doing a new pool. But I ended up voting against it because there were three options. And the city picked the most expensive sort of proposal with two pool options. And I think with most residents, they want a pool for families and their kids to play. If swim teams can use it, that's fine. But we don't want a, you know, a Class A recreational swim center. One of the things I think that you've gotten the message and are looking to be a more reasonable type pool. And there is a sticker shock associated with it. In my mind, something along the realm of similar what we have with five million. And maybe put off improvements to other facilities like the restrooms and things of that nature except for what is required for health and safety. I think you're moving in the right direction, getting away from the sort of two-pool, state-of-the-art swim center. And I think if you come in with that approach, you'll probably have the support of a lot of residents like myself. The second thing I wanted to talk about, and I think part of the problem in the community overall is there's a lot of segment with a lack of trust with the fiscal conservatism of the city council. Jersey Village has a long history of being very physically responsible. And when we see some of these projects come off, there seems to not be anyone designated to look for creative, cost-effective, cost-reduction options. And maybe there's a person in the organization who's designated with that. And if there is, you ought to let the residents know, these are the types of considerations we've done to cut the cost of this project, to put off this or that, to bring down that cost. Give us residents the ammunition to understand that that is a priority as opposed to what's the most beautiful place we could build. Certain things like, and as we consider this new center, employee input is important. And you take a look at corporate America, they get the input from the employees. But someone comes over and takes a bigger look and says, everybody doesn't need an office. Cubicles not only would be more cost-effective, but increase communications and things of that nature. We look at this structure here and we ask, is this included in those growth plans? It's a perfectly good structure. Or has that just been left off the table because an architect drew plans over there that looked very nice? All these things you may have all thought through, but you haven't let us know how you considered it and how you're working to reduce those costs. Help us to see that part of the information and you'll probably get a lot more support as you go forward on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. A lot of very good points there.
Good evening, I'm Michael Torigian. I live at eighty-three-twenty-five Vigil Street here in Jersey Village. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens, I stand before you with the weight of our community's voice backed by hundreds of signatures that prove our resolve. We have the votes to demand change and we will no longer be invisible. Let us start with the proposed twenty-four-million-dollar city hall. Hundreds of voters whose signatures have been, who, signatures we have collected reject this project, no matter the funding source. This isn't about affordability, it is about accountability. A project of this magnitude demands voter approval, plain and simple. Our community expects to have a say, not to be sidelined by decisions made behind closed doors. The same goes for the twenty-million-dollar sewer and water plan. This is another massive undertaking and the voters insist on a voice in its fate. These are not small sums or minor projects. They shape our city's future and the people deserve to decide how their money is spent. Trust in this council has been shaken and we all know why. The demolition of a community pool after a failed ten-point-one-million-dollar bond left a scar. That decision ignored the will of the people. We went out, we actually went out and asked voters what they wanted in the pool. This supports what this other gentleman said. And there was nobody who said, there were very few people who said they wanted no pool. There was nobody who said they wanted a ten-million-dollar pool. And I would tell you, probably ninety-five percent were, we want to spend between three and five million dollars on a pool. So if you move forward with that, I think you'll get support for the pool. Major projects like the city hall or sewer system should always have voter approval before they move forward. It's an expectation from your voters that puts you in office that we get some kind of voice. Tonight, I urge you to listen and honor the hundreds of voters behind these signatures. Commit to putting major projects to a vote. Restore our trust by showing you value our input. And let's rebuild this city together, starting with respect for the people's will.
Thank you, Mr. Torgan. First order, are you delivering that petition now?
No.
Okay. I, you and I haven't had a chance to speak, but I will say.
Come back up so everyone can hear my side.
No, no, I don't have any more back and forth. I am going to say from up here, please submit that petition as quickly as possible so that we can all start moving forward. Because I don't want to be in a situation where we have something that comes up. And so I've already heard that you have more than enough, which I expressed to a couple of people. I hope we come with way more than what's required. There are a multitude of reasons for that. So please submit that as quickly as possible so that we can get started on the next process.
If I can just real quickly let you know, the reason we haven't submitted it yet is we're doing a very thorough combing to make sure that everything is perfect on the petition. And the second thing is, which is even more important than that honestly, is that the people who are signing the petition have expressed to us overwhelmingly, it's the first time I feel they've had a voice in what's going on in the city in a long time. So I'm delaying it a little bit just so we can get more people to sign so they feel included in what's going on in the city. And I think long-term, that's going to help you guys get things through and shape the future.
And I, I find the feeling very sad because I will tell all of y'all, these conversations were in very public spaces. Almost no one came to the budget meeting. We talked at length about the city project on February fourteenth and there was a handful of us in the room. And I was not on council at the time and I made a very public comment and stood very strongly about some of the issues I have with this plan. There are ways to be involved and everybody here is open to listening. And we would love to continue to build the trust. So please, as soon as you can, submit.
Oh, I was just going to chime in also about the, I was trying to find the date for you, Mark. In February, at the meeting he was talking about, we went through all the ways that we could make this as low of a cost of project together. So if you have time after, I'm happy to go over some of the things that we cut with you.
Ashley Brown, one-five-six-oh-two Lakeview. I had, I had a whole bunch of stuff written and then this kind of upset me. So I'm just going to not read it. I was on Park and Rec for four years. And the first year I joined, the pool was a disaster. The pool needed to be replaced, the pool was going to die, the pool, the pool, the pool, the pool, the pool. How many of you came and heard about the pool?
I did.
You did, the Edwards did. How many people did? There is no shock and awe that the pool was demolished and that the pool died. And I have a very big problem with misinterpreted information that is going around saying, the city council did this because they're vindictive jerks. I'm not saying I agree with everything they do, but even a broken clock is right twice a day. And even if I don't agree with each one of them over something, we are going to agree. And that doesn't mean I'm a sellout, that doesn't mean I've converted sides, that doesn't mean anything. It means you guys did not listen. We said it for years, years. Now, doesn't mean you guys all participated, but it also means that the surveys that were done for this, for the citizens' opinion, were junk in, junk out. Because Robert and I have had many at-length arguments over the junk-in, junk-out problem of your survey collection. I took a survey twenty-five times to prove a point that is junk-in, junk-out. Your collections suck. I've also said that you guys have a PR problem, which I think is evident from everything that has been said. None of you on council are the PR person and none of you can talk openly because of Open Meetings Act. I thought you hired somebody, if you did, no offense, they suck. You need somebody. You need somebody who can convey to the average voter, not hundreds and hundreds of pages that nobody is going to read. And you have hundreds of pages of finance, if you don't have a degree, how the hell are you going to understand anything on that document? So the average Joe Blow who didn't go to college understands what the golf course is doing and that they're profitable? Nobody's going to get it as a whole. And then you get misinformation. How are you going to understand that your taxes increased not because our tax percentage increased, but the home value increased? So yes, you are paying more money, but it's not because the Jersey Village hates you. It's because HCAD hates you. You need help. And while we're here, and now I'm angry, I did email Robert last week because I got Austin's out of office and I never got a response. So I'm curious, if the forty-four-million-dollar passes, what is my home impact? You had a, you had one for the twenty-four million, what about the forty-four total? I'd appreciate a response. And further, why are we going to tear down buildings that are perfectly good? If it's covered in mold and it's a bank and all that, that's fine. But why tear down perfectly good buildings? You could move the city employees into a good building. It doesn't have to be functional in the way you like it, but get them into a safe space and piecemeal the process. I originally told Simon that I liked option A. And then I talked with a few other people and I realized, maybe C, but actually, no, they're all wrong. You need to use what you have, fix the infrastructure because that's the most important part. We should not have to worry about a petition that's going to cause our city to be demolished as a city because we don't have the funds. It needs to be a bigger picture and misinformation and misinterpreted information is the problem. And ultimately, that's your fault for not hiring somebody or not telling Austin to hire somebody to actually do that. And that may not be two people that are news fault, well, maybe yours because you were here before. But it's your responsibility and they are giving you a bad name. You want people to trust you, hire people and make Austin's office do it right and make your employees respond to emails.
Thank you, Ashley.
Ashley, I'm just going to speak on behalf of, at least I know the last two meetings for Budget Workshop. Jen and I have requested a position be made and if we found it in the budget, it was. And they've taken our feedback to my knowledge, but it seems to just be, also, thank you for a lot that you said, I really appreciate it. But it seems to be a digestibility issue. So I'm open to a feedback of an avenue of communication for a digestible amount of, of anything, of where it would be best because we're doing the online information, we're doing the marquees, we're doing the city mail and the mayor's newsletter. So like where, if you could email me anywhere else that you could see an improvement, I think I'm.
More about what is said, not necessarily just the avenues. But I'd be glad to talk to you.
Yeah.
And help, whatever.
Yeah, but I can tell you, I have said it out loud and it, I, it is frustrating. It's frustrating to sit up here and feel like you're advocating so hard and you say things so much and it's not getting absorbed and then somehow you're doing things like in the dark. It's like, it does, it's, it's hard sometimes to know that you're really like fighting hard for a city that is not seen. So I am open to feedback, I'm open to criticism on that realm because, yeah, I would like to like being up here more, a little bit more. Because I like all of y'all.
Ashley, I'm going to reply with some statement of fact because we did get some numbers. We are working on putting a calculator on the website so that people can do, just like they did with the previous bonds. Somebody actually mentioned earlier about financial accountability. Jennifer Brown is a finance director. It is her job to keep everyone in the city accountable to how they spend money and comply with all Texas laws and make sure that things that are competitively bid are competitively bid the way they are supposed to. For the upcoming COs that if we receive a petition, if that goes the way we expect, that we'll go for a November election. For a average Jersey Village house of four-hundred-thousand with a homestead exemption, you can expect an additional three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars in 2026, three-hundred-and-six in 2027 annually, and a hundred-and-sixty-two in 2028. The reason it drops significantly is because we have a lot of debt that is going to drop off in about three years in 2028. So you can, it will start to move down to, as I'll last in 2030, one-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars annually on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house with homestead exemption on a over-sixty-five crowd with homestead eighty-eight dollars in 2030 on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You didn't have anything else?
No, it was the calculator that you were, that you mentioned.
Okay. Brian McCauley.
All right, appreciate it. Brian McCauley, live at one-six-four-zero-one.
Brian McCauley, live at 16401 Smith Street. As you may, many of you are aware, I have a keen interest in the pool. My really ask is, the feedback we're getting a lot is, if we are gonna have expectations that people contribute, kind of outside of maybe a bond process in terms of donations, I think really people want to know what direction we're heading before they're gonna be willing to donate. So, obviously, I can't force you, but let's call it Twist Your Arm. I know there's agenda item on the, the docket today to be discussed. So, putting in your mind, if you had to make a decision today, as a council member, which direction would you go? Would you keep it at the current site? Would you move it? What do you think the budget should be? I think all those questions need to be asked, answered sooner rather than later. I think if we do that, that's gonna give us the ability, as citizens, hopefully, to drum up support and figure out which direction we need to move. I will say this, a pretty interesting story, I'll do it really quickly. My uncle just passed away not recently, and when you go, you get to see some relatives you haven't seen in a really long time. My great-grandfather on my maternal side, his name is Robert Earl Senior, passed away a number of years ago. I never had the pleasure of meeting him, but they used to call him Daddy Bob. Well, I found out he actually worked in the city, well, it wasn't even the city then, he worked for Clark Henry at the, the ranch, the, the cattle ranch, the dairy ranch. And my uncle told me this story, and he swears to God that this is true, that back in the day, they used to have, you know, live bands come out and play music to get people out, you know, because Houston was pretty far away. And he said, the one time that they got Gene Autry to come out and play, which I thought that was pretty cool, and he said, well, Mr. Gene Autry showed up to the festivities drunk, and my great-grandfather apparently punched him in the face for being drunk around the kids, and apparently, he never came back after that. So, anyway, thank you.
Brian, I'm glad your family has a history of keeping people accountable. It wouldn't be a council meeting without Kimberly Hanau.
My name is Kimberly Hanau, and I live at 15601 Singapore Lane. As my 45th installment, after living here for just under five years, and not knowing much of anything about Jersey Village, nor how municipalities function, I've spent a lot of time researching our history and how local government works. And it is incredibly different from personal household finances or commercial businesses. Our incorporation was on April 16th, 1956, to avoid annexation by the City of Houston. Jersey Village is a city that operates as a home royal charter, as adopted by electors in council in August 1986, with amendments over the years. There are many council-appointed citizen committees for special projects such as the charter. The municipal code section 1.02 explains the form of government as a council manager and is pursuant to provisions of and limitations of the U.S. Constitution, laws of the state of Texas, and by the charter. All powers of the city shall be vested in and exercised by an elective city council. The council shall enact ordinances, adopt budgets, determine policies, appoint the city manager, and execute other powers and duties as prescribed in the charter. The code advises the city may use a corporate seal, may contract and be contracted with, may cooperate with the state, any agency, or the federal government to accomplish any lawful purpose of the advancement of the interests, welfare, morals, comfort, safety, inconvenience of the city and its inhabitants. The city manager, who shall be the chief administrative and executive officer of the city, is responsible for the efficient and economical administration of city government, including employees. Duties includes to propose and administer the budget, advise on the financial condition and future needs, enforce all city ordinances, and perform duties directed by council not inconsistent with the charter. The charter includes council electing a mayor pro temp, and may investigate the conduct of those affiliated directly with the city, though council are not allowed to instruct or request the city manager to appoint to or remove from office or employment any person, either publicly or privately. Rules of procedure includes majority of the members of council, excluding the mayor, to constitute a quorum with actions taken by a majority vote. The meetings of council shall be once per month and public, except where permitted by law, to be closed, in whole or apart, and held at city hall or other public location. So, there are no late-night sessions to quietly pass anything, as voting is public as per the state of Texas, and our council meetings are shown online. Procedures for governmental meetings include the Open Meetings Act, as it requires meetings of governmental bodies to be open to the public, except for expressly authorized, closed, or executive sessions, and to be preceded by public notice of the time, place, and subject matter of the meeting. In order for a closed meeting to occur, an agenda is also made available, and the quorum open meeting is begun, with the presiding officer, such as the mayor, publicly advising of the closed meeting detailing the subchapter D legal reasons such as consulting with the city attorney, deliberations of real property, personnel matters, and economic development negotiations. Only members of the governmental body and necessary officers and employees are in closed meetings. The thought that lots of people are afraid that someone else is getting something that they aren't resonates so badly that they are unable to trust their own elected city council and state legislatures to be impartial and analytical by abiding by the state laws and suffering the legal penalties if they do not. The new city campus was one of Clark Henry's very first projects, building a church for his friends and residents of this new Jersey Village. Community members physically helped to get the workings begun with professional involvement, and additional buildings increased over time. I truly believe that Clark Henry would so enjoy seeing the residents and visitors of his prior F and M Jersey Ranch gathering together for municipal needs, court proceedings, city council meetings, various departments in one spot, and neighbors learning how to sew and paint rocks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the comment cards I have tonight. Moving to the city manager's report for you. Anybody have any questions? Austin is at... Jim, go ahead. I, I will look, I know I saw your name, and you always speak, so, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and city council, my name is Jim Fields, I live at 16413 St. Hillier, and thank you again for allowing me to contribute to tonight's meeting. I want to first talk real quick, I'm gonna get off-topic here, what I was gonna say. The workshop meetings, I've attended those. You sit there, you can just talk five minutes, you can only comment five minutes, you can't answer any questions. No documents provided to you, so you can ask any questions, but you can ask questions. That can be changed. The rules are written by you, Mayor. They're not in the, the, the open meetings codes, because I looked at it. It's not in the ordinances. So, Mr. Beasley had a chance here, you said let him finish what he's going to say. It's not written in stone, it's five minutes. I think that's very helpful, because you get more input from the citizens. And also, on the pool, I want to put an end to this thing. On the pool, I looked into it, I called up Councilman Hunsaker, I called up three other pool companies, major ones, and I'll give them the names. $4 million. I said, "No problem." On top of that, what I think was irresponsible was that you tore the pool down, tore it out. After the bond didn't pass, well, first, excuse me, you want $10 million for a new pool complex, but you don't have, have $800,000 to extend the life of the pool three to five years. Then you kept on saying, "Oh, the pool gets, it's 50 years old." Did you know in Austin, there's a pool that's 106 years old? That was a bad excuse. And then did you follow up for everybody of the kids here to have a place to swim? Well, I did. I'm gonna let everybody else know right now. Rolling Fork HOA has a place, you can pay 250 bucks and go swimming. You should have had that backup plan. Councilmember Rossi tried to say, "Hey, don't, what's the backup plan?" But moving on. Let's talk about monies here. The city's broke. We're broke. I remember a couple, two years ago, the council member, Watson, saying, "Oh, we're very conservative on spending our monies." We're broke, and we need to have a hiring freeze. We need to reduce the costs. I'll give you an example. This is in parks, I couldn't believe it, I looked at it tonight. 75% of the parks' budgets is in salaries plus benefits. We're talking about $727,000 in salaries and benefits versus 958,000 for the total budget. That's crazy. We need to consolidate the departments. Now, we have, we used to have one public works, now we got three different departments. All these departments have directors in it. It's crazy. We have duplication. Then, another thing, buying cars every 2.5 years, I looked at it, $1.9 million. And what I'm asking you is, you need to look into the budget and cut costs. Don't tax us in oblivion. And I was gonna say, another thing, it's just, this is a little bit, but when we have these events, we should stop, we don't have the monies to have events for heat of this, feed of that. But you see how many people we're, we're paying to do this? We're broke. But what's really a kicker is that when you charge the citizens who paid these people to hold, to tend to create these events, you charge us for it. Incredible. Moving on to another thing here. I was gonna say, this is for the city, to keep our property values up. Castle Bridge light pole still down, going on seven months, actually, 10 months. A bed mattress on the easement for three weeks. Two street signs are knocked down. Street collapsing next to San's Cross from Park and Ride, it's getting worse. Park and Ride's a mess. Can we call Park and Ride and tell them to clean up their act? Rio Grande, the always signs intersection of Rio Grande and Village Drive are missing, it's going on over a year. Rio Grande and St. Hillier light pole is on all the time. Save money where we can. And Village Drive, I think it's not safe, because there's no striping. And another one, we get a lot of revenue from the city, we need to protect our, keep on talking about taxes, and a lot of our monies come from revenues, I mean, revenues come from property taxes. We have two junk cars that have been sitting for over 10 years, well, actually, one, two years, other ones over 10 years. And I had an engagement with councilmember Rossi on this. That's the longest email chain I ever had, they couldn't find it, and this thing is right around the corner. And I've asked every one of you to go look, but you won't look. At the end, they, they said they found the cars, then they said they were inoperable. Then, when I replied back to city manager police, I said, "How did you determine that?" No answer. Moving on. We have a mechanic shop on St. Hillier named Enterprise Engines. They have a forklift they use down the road, they put a front loader, we have lots of large box trucks come down the street through a fire-
Jim, that's time.
I'm gonna continue. Please let me continue.
So, I'm sorry, I don't, no, do you have your five minutes?
You're not gonna allow me?
Those then.
Former mayor did.
I am going to say that I, sincerest apologies, I did find your thing, I did miss it, and I'm very sorry for that.
You're not gonna allow me your time?
No, your time's up.
That's your rules, right?
The time's up.
Is your rule just now?
Jim, the time is up?
I'm asking the smoke weather, but your rule-
That has been heard by council and decided by council as a body. Five minutes.
Attorney, the last attorney told me that the mayor makes the rules.
Jim, your five minutes are up. Please take a seat.
City council sets the rules, and they have to enforce them equally for, for everybody.
If the last, the last attorney told me the mayor makes the rules, and the last mayor, in another meeting, overrode those rules, but it was necessary.
Moving on to the city manager's report. Austin is on sabbatical now. Robert?
Mayor, council, the city manager's report is in front of you. If you guys have any questions, staff is here to answer.
This question has to do, I know we've discussed a lot about finance or danced around it. Where in the finance report, would it be at the top of the revenues, where we'd identify the income received from sales of city property, including cars that we turn over every two years?
Those revenues would be included in Fund VII, which is the capital replacement fund. And so, if you look in the income statement for the governmental funds, you'll find it there.
What page is that? Sorry, that's, did you say 17?
Is that 17?
Are you speaking of tonight's agenda?
Yeah, is that right?
I was just, or the budget as a whole, either way.
Page 17 of 44, that is correct, in the governmental funds report. It's page 34 in the packet.
Do you have them out in front of you?
To date, we have earned $504,069.81.
Where are you reading that?
Sorry, it's on page 35, sorry. Page six was, Fund VI was the prior page, so. The total revenues are 1.5 million in the fund, half a million of that is coming from the sale of vehicles, and assets in general, not just vehicles.
Are you talking about under equipment replacement?
At the top of the page, it says capital replacement. You have three categories, interest earned, inter-fund activity, and miscellaneous revenue. And the, the sale of vehicles is under miscellaneous revenue. It's about halfway down the page.
07719809?
Yes, that is one, it's that whole section.
That whole section?
Yes.
Category 98 miscellaneous revenue.
So, if I'm reading that correctly, that means that we have made $62,620, is that correct?
No, our year-to-date activity is 504,000, and we expect to bring in 850,000 for the year. Is that correct, Jennifer?
That's what we had left from what was budgeted. We have several vehicles that-
Oh, yes.
We have several vehicles that we put out for auction, and they have not met the reserve. So, we are kind of biding our time to see what happens in the market, and we will put those back out. But we have, we are going to be recommending next year that we do not actively replace vehicles like we have been doing for the last couple of years.
I do, as far as that question, I do recall the decision being made to increase, or to decrease the time in the rolling over the vehicles was because at one point in time, we were actually making money off of selling, like, we were actually making more than what we purchased them for because of supply and demand situations. And so, it was extremely lucrative to turn these vehicles over. But for those of you that were in the budget meeting in May up here, it also was brought up that maybe those things need to change going forward, which will also be a conversation, I believe, in July, July 11th, the July 11th budget meeting.
Yeah, to make sure we're comparing apples to apples, it was said that the fleet budget was 1.9. To give the comparable, the revenues from sale for this budget years expected to be 1.3 million. All right. Any other questions on the city manager's report?
One final thing is about the new city website, jerseyvillage.gov. I don't, I, I've had no problems on it. I know every time there's a new thing, you have to give it some shakedown, and I know we're continually adding and improving it. Any updates on that in general, Robert? Any hiccups that y'all found?
Yeah, if you guys notice anything with the website, just submit an email to myself or Abram, and we've been combing through it ourselves, and it seems to be that we have it all addressed.
And I know the previous agendas, which I tend to refer to a lot, are being added and can be added over time. I think that's part of the plan with new software and everything, so, appreciate that. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Moving to the consent agenda. Does anybody have an item they want to pull off the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull off Resolution Number 202539, please.
Okay. And then looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the special session on May 12th and the regular session, May 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All second? A motion is second, all in favor. Thank you. Moving to item E2, Consider Resolution 202539, Renewing the City's Guidelines for Property Tax Abatements. Misha Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Misha Johnson, Community Development Manager. On June 19, 2017, the City Council originally passed the Resolution 201748, establishing these guidelines for the property tax abatements for businesses. And every two years, we are required to update them. Last year, we updated them and we increased the amount just to, basically, we looked at what other cities were doing, cities that we, you know, believed that we were on par with. And this year, I believe that they should stay the same.
Any questions for Misha?
Can you give a quick, brief description of what tax abatement is?
So tax abatement, this is a tool. Me personally, when we're talking to new businesses, this is not a deal creator, this is a deal closer for businesses. So if a business is already interested in coming to the city of Jersey Village and they're like, hey, we have, you know, we're looking at one other city, but, you know, if there's an incentive that you can do. We have two ways of going about that incentive. We either do sales tax abatements, which is our preferred method because it's a lot, it's a lot simpler and honestly, it has probably a better benefit for both the city and both the businesses. But then we also have the option of property tax abatement. Since I've been here, we have not done a property tax abatement because, like I said, it's a tool and it's probably our, it's our second most-used tool.
So for the authorized categories, what is the city doing to attract these businesses? And what businesses have a current, have the current policy attracted?
So communication tools, we've already done a video before that we use and that we send to different businesses. Obviously, we have to get out there. We've got to go to trade shows. We've got to go to places like ICSC, ULI. These are places that I always go. I talk to businesses, what would interest you. People have a lot of interest in coming out to the suburbs and coming out to the city of Jersey Village. As of right now, it's just getting the space for them, for most of them, and getting a space that they would like to be at. So it's that. We also are working with HGAC. We just made another video and that one's going to be a live, work, play. And so hopefully, we will be able to send that one out to, to different events so that we can get some interest.
I did just want to make a comment. For those of you who don't know what ICSC is, like, why would you? That's, that's a very large group of the international shopping centers. And what that is, is those, they hold, they hold large retreats, if you want to call it that, where it's essentially all, all these big developers and all these big companies come together and they make appointments with each other. It's where they do a lot of their networking. So it's when you see cities that start having companies come in and restaurants and different things like that, from, from restaurants to just normal businesses, to Targets, to Trader Joe's, that's where a lot of those deals all happen with developers. And so it is good to know that the city is sending somebody there to also make sure that they are getting into these meetings and trying to attract businesses because sales tax is the key here for us to help with our, help with our costs.
So off the top of your head, could you give me the name of something that has benefited from this tax payment or utilized this, this policy?
We haven't used property tax abatements since I've been here. We haven't. But sales tax abatements, we do talk about. So sales tax more likely, it's just a simpler solution. Also, this is up to 10 years for sales tax. We'll typically do up to five years. So just, it's a closer and it's a closer for a really big deal, to be honest. Like, this is like a headquarters. So if somebody was going to come, they were going to rebuild their headquarters here, that's the type of thing we would do with property tax abatement. But for smaller companies that are going to come, they're probably going to get sales
One comment, since we're talking about these, is that a lot of times when we talk with businesses, we're very careful to structure these deals in ways that make sense for the city. When we have done them in the past, we have looked to, one, cover our costs first and make sure that they produce enough that we're able to cover our costs. And then, then we start the rebate process and they often have an annual cap and a lifetime cap. So that the business gets their rebate, but then it eventually hits a cap and the city gets the excess after that. No more discussion, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-39. All second.
Motion is second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda, Consider Resolution 2025-40, Authorizing the Application for the Texas Department of Motor Vehicle Catalytic Converter Crime Prevention Grant. Chief Danny Keel.
Mayor and council, the Jersey Village Police Department seeks City Council's approval to apply for a grant for fiscal year 2026 from the Texas Motor, Texas Department of Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority, the MBPCA grant, which we applied for last year and were successful and got it awarded. Under this catalytic converter crime prevention grant program, if we're awarded, the grant would fund the purchase of additional flock surveillance video equipment, advanced software, and looking at also purchasing two unmarked surveillance vehicles for our criminal investigations division. These enhancements aim to expand JBPD's current automatic license plate reader network and improve investigative capabilities in combating motor vehicle-related crimes, including burglaries, thefts, and catalytic converter thefts. The proposed upgrades will support the real-time monitoring, integrate AI-powered search tools and capabilities through the flock system, and also provide officers with actionable intelligence to increase efficiency and officer safety. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions for chief?
Wait, who's writing? Let me see, I just read that yesterday. Who was writing the grant?
We are.
So for anyone who's in, there is a chart in here that says what the total purchase price would be and what the city matches price would be. So it's, so for 207 and some change, the city match would be 20%?
Correct. It's structured just like the last one was. So we would only, our upfront cost for the cities would be 20% of the total purchase
Right, it was 41,000.
Love the flock cameras. Great. I think it's great that you're, you know, we're looking at options with grants.
So I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2025-40, Authorizing the Application for Texas Department of Motor Vehicle Catalytic Converter Crime Prevention Grant.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? I blinked. All those in favor? Motion passes. I just blinked. Yeah, I think that is the problem. Moving on to item F2, Discussion Concerning Capital Improvement Plan, City Campus Project Certificates of Obligation. This was placed on the agenda by me. The initiating factor was that I expected a lot of people here today and wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to have some of the back and forth we did earlier. Maybe not back and forth, but at least some more response than normal. And this project is almost exclusively opinion at this point. So wanted to put it on here and allow council opportunity to have discussion. I had two council members reach out and ask to make sure that it was going to get put on the agenda. So I don't think I need to read this for y'all. Y'all have read it. Any discussion?
I have a question for Tommy.
Yes.
Well, what, could you explain the state's intended purpose for enacting the Certificate of Obligation Act by chance?
State's intended purpose? State's intended purpose for enacting the Certificate of Obligation Act?
Like, for allowing cities to, forgiving, for allowing the cities to, and if it's not a law fine, but forgiving cities the ability to be able to issue certificates of obligation. Do you know where that came from and what the intended purpose was for giving cities that, I guess, that authorization to do that?
Well, I mean, I'd have, I'd have to look at the law. I mean, usually up in, in the beginning of any bill, there's a purpose that's stated. But generally speaking, the, the, the CO Act was enacted so that cities could finance infrastructure improvements over a period of time. That's, that's how I've always understood it, but that's.
So was it meant for emergencies or was it just for what you just said?
I think it was for all the things that are identified that it can be used for. Infrastructure, it can be used for, emergency is certainly one of them. But it's a, it's a, it's a wide range and I think it was a wide range for a reason.
One of the really interesting things I found while digging through was the Certificate of Obligation Act of 1971, written by Albert Murrow, that a law school had published. And it started out, "The Certificate of Obligation Act of 1971 is originally designed to cure ambiguities and remedy difficulties caused by the bond and warrant law of 1931 and provided alternate, more flexible means of financing by cities and some counties. The Act is a cumulative of other methods of financing, also authorizes alternative method of financing by providing a new class of security which may be issued and delivered by the issuer." It's a short 11-page document that was pretty interesting with the history of COs.
Because I actually looked it up. So the other thing I was going to say was, or go into, was what type of loan that a city can take out to pay for things like roads, buildings, fire stations, other public projects, which you kind of were alluding to. COs can be issued without an election, which is for capital improvement projects and necessary I basically did, I want to give everyone where I found all that. The reason I'm asking is because it came up. And so I Googled the, the legal code and found it. And it was in Subchapter C, Certificate of Obligation Act, Section 271.041 was the short title. And it's probably 16 pages long. I'm not going to read it all, but I wanted to give everyone the opportunity to know where that is, like, where I found it. I didn't, because it came up and I was like, that's a really good question. Is it just for that, that purpose? I didn't really see where it was just for emergencies. And so that's why I'm bringing it up because I just couldn't find that. But that was what was being told to me and so I just wanted to double-check and make sure.
No, it's in the Texas Local Government Code, titled Subchapter C, Chapter 271. If you look Local Government Code, Chapter 271, you can find the Certificate of Obligation Act. It is lengthy. It is not for just emergencies. That is a long-held opinion by a lot of politically-involved people, but it is not what it was designed for at all. It is often used for that because of its mobility and ease of use.
Well, I thought it was a good question though, because the fact that it was brought to my attention in that way, I just thought it was a good question, so I thought I'd look it up. Thought I'd ask.
I want to speak for myself and myself only regarding this, not speaking for Councilmember Hughes or Mitchum or Rossi or McCray. I voted for, for the use of certificates of obligation because our Texas Legislature had 18 days left in their session at the time of the vote and they were trending towards removing local control. Removing local control of finances, removing local control of the ability for elected officials to make decisions. And that means they're removing control from the voters, which sounds like hypocrisy if we're saying we're using certificates of obligation instead of bonds. But at the same time, if a law passed, and there still may be one that's passed this summer, and I'll get to that in a second, then as a body, you know, we can't, we may be prevented from accumulating necessary debt for infrastructure. And I'll go back to why that's necessary. In May of 2023, City Manager Police brought to the attention of council during our workshop that evening, that the cost of building a street was three and a half times more than it was in 2019. That was in four years. I can imagine that it's now closer to four. Maybe if we had a Groupon, we could cut it to 3.75. But at the end of the day, prices are increasing far above what the city is able to do and pay for cash. For water, sewer projects, for roads, and that's our obligation. Our obligation, in my mind, the obligation of a city official or an elected city official, your first two priorities, and you can flip them around, are public infrastructure, safe, secure public infrastructure, and emergency services. And I think we do the emergency services pretty damn well, thanks to these two gentlemen and their teams. But I'm not sure that if we cannot borrow going forward, we can do public infrastructure as well as we have been. Now, going back to that, so we had 18 days from May 14th, and my math might be wrong, to June 2nd, when the legislature ended. June 11th, Governor Abbott came out and he can call a special session. He can call one tomorrow if he wants to and it can start probably the day after. He can say, he said, "We must rein in the ability to, for local government to hike taxes." You know what? I don't want to raise taxes any more than I need to because, like all of you, I have to pay the same tax rate that you do. So I don't want to pay any more than we absolutely need to, but if we can't do these things, we can't raise the funds to do them, then we're not going to be able to do them. Whether it's a city hall, whether it's water and sewer, whether it's continued roads. So that's, was the push. That's why the City Council pushed for bonds and issued the remaining debt of debt that the citizens had voted for in 2020, November of 2023. And then we went ahead and authorized the beginning of the procedure to issue certificates of obligation. And that's why I voted for this. Do I agree with everything on the design of the city hall? Like you, I would love to find a better way to do it, but you got to pay for it, whether it's $10 million, four more million dollars, or the 21, which I don't think is palatable. I don't think it's an extraordinary cost, given what we're doing and given the price of construction, but I do think it's not unreasonable to say, that's a large amount of money. And I think I'm just blathering on here, so I'm going to.
You mentioned the water and wastewater.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. I want to say a couple of things here. Drew, with respect to the, the House Bill 19, as we know, it never made it out of committee before the end of the legislative session. I voted in favor of issuing the notice of intention to issue the C Os as a protective measure. I feel like harping on that about the possibility that a special session could call, could be called, and that, that House bill that never made it out of committee could be resurrected is really just fear mongering at this point. And more importantly, I think that the voters, as evidenced by Mr. Torigian and the petitions and the amount of response and the emails that I've received, the voters feel like they should have a say in some of these big borrowing decisions. I feel very confident that with respect to the $20 million fund needed for water and sewer improvements over the next five years, with a payout of up to 25 years, that if that $20 million debt was put on the November ballot, that the voters in Jersey Village would support it and would pass that under a referendum and, and agree for a general obligation bond to fund that obligation. But here, I believe that the voters seek and are entitled to make that decision, rather than city council just say, well, we need to do it because of, you know, this, this fear of the legislative history or the legislative initiative, which, as I said, never made it out of committee. With respect to the second certificate of obligation, you know, the contrast between, and again, I, I voted on issuing the notice of intention to publish as a protective measure. But the contrast between putting to the voters the opportunity to vote for a pool and the voters saying, buy a majority vote, no, we don't want a $10.1 million bond for the pool, we, we disapprove that. And then to turn around and for the city to unilaterally, without any voter input and approval, to say, well, we're now going to issue a C O for up to 24 million for this city campus, I think is a terrible idea. And I think that not allowing the voters to vote on it, because there's not voter buy it on this whole city campus idea. The city chose to buy the $4.5 million church property. And I think that most people in their minds had an idea that that property could be reconditioned and, and remodeled for an appropriate amount so that we would have city hall. I don't think anyone in their right mind understood or believed that the city was going to have to pay up to 20, 21, 24 million dollars. I don't think anyone in their right mind would buy a $450,000 house and say, I'm going to put $2.1 million into it. And so in this case, I feel like the, the city needs to back off on the city, city campus project, as I indicated by opposing the architect's contract. I feel like the, the city, the city workers who are in the existing city hall can be relocated into the new building with some minor modifications. And quite frankly, with what's coming down the pike, I think that that can be funded out of the budget. That's what I anticipate happening. Not to the tune of, you know, eight, 10, 12 million dollars, but a, a couple of million dollars, you know, two, three, five, so that those two buildings could house potentially public works and the office workers in the city hall. And, and that's just generally as an overview. That's my reason why I, I do believe that the C Os, I don't know what the effect of the petition is or when it's going to be filed, but I do believe that the, the, the road that we're going down to issue these C Os, that we need to, we need to navigate off that road, because it's, it's the wrong path for this city. It sends the wrong messages to the constituents, to the residents. I, I genuinely believe that the water and sewer, $20 million can be put on the November ballot and will be very much approved by the, by the voters. And also there is a factor here, and that is that while we issued the notice of intention, if we wait until July to call down the C Os, then we're going to hear the argument, oh, well, if you call down the C Os at the last minute, then you're going to get a, a decrease in your bond rating, something along those lines. So I think it's fair and important to tell the companies that we're working with, with respect to the C Os, if it's, if it is the city's position and council's position to, instead of the C Os, to pursue a general obligation bond at the ballot in November, that's the path we should go on. Just wanted to chime in my two cents. I hope y'all were able to hear that.
I actually had some more questions from the public, and there were maybe not direct questions, but I started thinking about them while they were coming through. So one of them was, were there water and wastewater sewer projects in the city's CIP? And I know that they were, I saw some of them, but I wanted to know if that was the case, why wasn't the money that was budgeted ahead of, either why wasn't the money budgeted ahead of time, or where did that money go that was budgeted? I don't know if I'm asking that correctly. So I'm hoping that maybe you can answer that.
Yes, so these projects were outlined in the 10-year CIP for the Water and Wastewater Utility Fund. That study was completed by Quiddity in 2024, and essentially they inspect all of our water and wastewater facilities. It's a, it's a pretty extensive process, and then they, they document the needs and then they map that out.
So is there a chart where that, like, when I look at CIPs for utility districts, it's an Excel spreadsheet, it has years in the columns, and then it says, this is how much we think we need to budget for on this time and this time?
Correct, yes. So we outline these projects in the CIP horizontally. This year, staff is working on trying to make it a vertical, easier to read, and we're breaking down the specific portions of the water and wastewater plants, so you can kind of see a little more in-depth of where we're headed.
Okay, so I'm looking at one that I don't know how I got it. I think it was somewhere in email, but it's around 17 pages long, and it's color-coded. Does that sound familiar?
Yeah, it sounds like this year's, and this is on the city website for everyone else.
So the question I asked was, if money was budgeted ahead of time for these projects, why were we still having to issue C Os? Or at least, sorry, why was this a consideration? Because we don't.
I can address that. So you as a city council appropriate funds annually in the budget, so unless you issue bonds, you are not pre-funding anything out of the capital improvement plan. That would have to be approved and funded on an annual basis by that city council, because you cannot obligate future city councils by saying, we're going to approve this five-year CIP and expect future city councils to come up with the money for it. So if, unless you issue bonds to finance the projects, you have to assume you're going to be going on a pay-as-you-go basis. I don't know what the funding source that was identified. I haven't had that chance to dig into last year's CIP, but that would be the one issue there.
While you're looking that up, Robert, did you pull up the CIP? Do I remember correctly, during the meeting, we pulled all of the projects up into and including fiscal year 31? Yes, so that's this $20 million C O for water and wastewater. The way we came up with that is there are significant rising costs, inflation. I hate debt, y'all. I, I have sat up here with several of my counterparts and fought against using debt. Unfortunately, there are reasons that it makes sense. This is one of them. And so we pulled all of the capital improvement projects up until and including fiscal year 31 on the capital improvement plan for water and wastewater. You ready?
Well, I'm looking, I want to use an example, because I, I feel like, I feel like I came into council with a little bit more understanding because of my work in utility districts. So it's, there wasn't really a crash course that really, I kind of, I was snapping to it pretty fast. And so I'm familiar with looking at a CIP. What, what I don't think, what I think, some people don't understand that a capital improvement plan, what it looks like, how to read it, how to look at a budget. And so I understand when somebody in the community says, you're giving us a 500-page packet, we're supposed to dig for it and understand why you're doing this. And that's, I feel that frustration for them. And to be honest, had I not had any work in the utility districts, then I don't, I think I would be lost up here. I wouldn't be qualified to even, or feel qualified to be up here. So when I look at something that is a 10-year proposed fiscal year 2034, if something is, I'm trying to find a big number, but if something was, in, excuse me, in nine years, we have in our CIP for something for $8 million in our infrastructure, would the, so the, based on what you just said, we would possibly issue bonds for that down the road?
Yes. So typically, when you have a multi-year capital improvement program, you fund year one. The out years, so year, say, two through 10 are for planning purposes. And each year, the city council that is elected addresses that plan. That plan can change as information becomes available. Say we have a major sanitary sewer issue, and we really need to put more money into sanitary sewer, which has happened this year. So your priorities may shift. And so that is a plan, it's not set in stone, except for the one year that you're funding in that year.
So it's not like we would say, oh, in three years, we're going to need a, a, a lift station completely rehauled, let's start saving now and stick that into a special account. It doesn't work that way.
It can work that way, if you have a pay-as-you-go plan. Right now, our rates barely support our operating budget. The utility fund has zero reserves, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk with y'all, and it's in the packet for the utility fund income statement. Most, most enterprise funds have a 90-day reserve. We do not have that. Right now, we have a five-day reserve, based on the current operating cash. We do not have funds to pay cash for projects. So unless you want to raise a bunch of cash right now, the only option we have to fund these projects is bonds. And that, that spreads the cost of the project over the life of the project, because these are 25, 30, 40-year life assets that we're talking about.
In my experience with the utility districts, and I never bring that up up here, but I, I feel it's necessary, bond sales are very common for spreading out the cost over years in order for their tax not to have to spike costs constantly. I understand that. Off the top of your head, do you know what the city's credit rating is?
It is AA+ simply.
What's the best credit rating?
AAA. And all of our, all of our debt that we have is tax-backed. This could, this would be self-supporting from the utility fund, so it wouldn't impact the property tax bills. But it would still carry the tax-backed credit rating through the issuance of C Os or G Os.
Actually, I was going to ask, Drew, if I recall, when we've talked about credit rating in the past, the city's been a AA+ because to get to AAA, we do not, we are not large enough.
We are not nearly large enough to be AAA.
Yes, so yes, AAA is highest. We are incapable. We are the highest possible rating for the city of Jersey Village.
So this is like saying, I have, let's say I said I had, what is the highest credit score? What is it, 850? If I said I had an 820, it's kind of like that, okay. By delaying the bond authorization, right, let's say either council says, you know what? We heard you, we heard you, we're going to go ahead and back off, or if it goes to election per the, the proposed petition, what are, what's the impact on, because I've, I read that over and over in that packet from last month, what's the impact on our credit rating?
So I have a ratings call scheduled on Monday with Standard and Poor's for these issues. I will be transparent with them and let them know that we potentially will be having to, we'll be pulling the two C O issues dependent on a petition. I, I don't think that that in itself, as long as we're upfront about it, I don't think that in itself would affect the credit rating. Now, if we were to get to, to July 21st and receive a petition, I mean, we would have already received the credit rating at that point, but I don't think that that would have a very good impact on our future ability to sell bonds, because we will lose our credibility with the underwriters that we've selected.
That mean, like if we wait all the way to July 15th, you said?
Yeah, July 21st is when we'll be negotiating the sale with our underwriting syndicate, and we've selected three firms to work with.
And when, when a credit rate rating goes down, what does that tell investors about the city? And I'm not asking because I have some agenda, I'm seriously just asking so we all understand.
So when, when a city or an issuer is downgraded, it sends a signal to the investment community that there could potentially be an issue. There's a notice that goes out, say Standard and Poor's would be issuing a press release, it would go out to all of the investors who would potentially be buying our bonds, and it might make them really kind of think twice before investing in our bonds. It may not be a terrible thing to the cost of how much, you know, how much it costs us to issue bonds. But there's, this always tended to be a negative connotation to receiving a downgrade. Now, whether there actually is or not, you know, I've never worked at a city that was downgraded, so I, I can't tell you on that side.
So would that affect the interest rate, which would affect the overall?
Yes, it would, it would affect the interest rate. So it would cost us more money.
Can I say something here?
Yeah, go ahead, Simon.
Yeah, so just, just following up on what Connie asked about and what Jennifer responded with respect to the bonds and, and also actually specific to the Water Utility Fund, and following up on James's comment about, oh, well, the bonds are going to roll off over the next two or three years. If you'll recall, and, and this plays into the issue of a certificate of obligation on the city campus. If you recall, the $20 million for water and sewer is earmarked for the water and sewer expenses over the next five years, but it'll, it'll obviously have a payback more in the 20, 25-year range. If you'll recall also from the May 12th budget meeting, or preliminary budget meeting, the water and sewer expenses anticipated in capital improvements for years six through 10 are in the, I'm going to say in the ballpark of about 44 million. So while in two or three years from now, that existing debt service for the older bonds, the 2012 and 2016 will roll off, in five years from now, we're going to need to take out bonds of somewhere in the range of 44 million or more for water and sewer. And I think that Jennifer would, would agree that currently with the water treatment, I'm sorry, with the I'm sorry, with the water rates as they are, that the, the utility fund, just as she was saying, there's not a big reserve, would be insufficient to satisfy the debt service on that new round of bonds in five years from now for the water utility fund improvements in the year six through ten. So that's another reason why we need to be super careful about what we're borrowing and why I oppose the CO for the, for the city campus. And I think we need to slow down on that while we go through the process of trying to sell the properties on the south side of two-ninety. And, and all of this needs to be done, you know, with, with an idea about, you know, what are we doing to protect the taxpayers? And what are we doing to be fiscally conservative in managing these, all of these moving parts? And doing it in a way that's the, in the best interest for the city. So just wanted to chime in with that.
That's where we're finding forty-four million in costs.
It's on the CIP from twenty-twenty-four, between the twenty-five million for Castle Bridge and then water, I think water facility, oh, well, there's eight for the ETJ, so that may or may not happen. And there's other bits, but so it's at least, I mean, to Simon's point, it's at least twenty-five. There's a seven for another sewer system for the ETJ, so that may or may not happen. But Castle Bridge has at least thirty-one coming up and then some other, other costs at that point. And this is in the, just so everybody, if you're scoring at home, if you go to City of Jersey Village Departments Finance, I don't see y'all taking notes. If you go to City of Jersey Village Departments, at the top of the page, Finance, and then Budget and Financial Reports, you can scroll down and there's a little thing for capital improvements plans. And it'll show you what the seventeen pages of color-coded spreadsheets or color-coded lines are. And then there's things from the past. So just, so it's all, it's all out there. I understand, nobody wants to thumb through it all, and I get it. And that's why we can help you out and we can entail Jennifer or other team members to help us help you out. So just, just let us know if you have questions, if you ever have time to spare and want to go filtering through the CIP plan. Also, we'll cover the next CIP plan, or the updated, on, that will be published on and around July first-ish in time for the budget workshop we'll all attend on July eleventh. So if you want to, anyway, just wanted to get ahead of that.
I do think something to point out is with, in reference to the sewer and water situation, is that even with, even with bonding, like this does not, the, which, you know, to Jennifer's credit on her comments there, even with bonding, that doesn't mean that our water rates don't rise. You know, people got, I believe it was two years ago, or was it three years ago, when water rates took a significant hike? I apologize, I don't remember the year. And we got a lot of complaints about that. Unfortunately, that's still, we're not, we're still not running in the positive, even with the increases to those water rates. And, and again, I know we've said this multiple times before, but I feel like a lot of people don't understand is that money for water goes into its own account. It is not used for anything else. That money that goes into, that you pay for your water rates, that, or what you pay for your water does not get used for anyone else. It cannot be added anywhere else. It doesn't go anywhere else. That money is there. And yet, we're still not in a situation where we're able to apparently have, you said a five-day reserve. Is that correct, Jennifer?
Based on the current budget, yes.
Based on the current?
We haven't drawn it all down. We have several capital improvement projects that were budgeted to be paid for cash that have not completed yet. So we're not currently there.
Can I ask a really blunt question that I've heard as well? Everything that McCray said here, is this due to the mismanagement of funds? Is this due to just bad luck? What is your, you, you have a lot of experience, so what do you think?
I, I don't believe it's, I don't believe there's any mismanagement or wrongdoing. I haven't had a chance to dig into it to find out how we got here. I'm just picking it up as of January twenty-seventh and trying to figure out what I can do with it. And so my goal in assisting Austin with this year's budget and CIP is to make it easier to understand for y'all and for the public.
I think that's part of the mistrust too, is that we're basically up here saying, hey, we don't have the money, but we don't know why. And we need to know the why.
So, so there's some why here. I've had, I've had, so there are very few salaries, very few paid out of that fund. So one of the unique, I've had the opportunity to get to know Jersey Village and the government and some of the inner workings for more than twenty years. I started hanging around Jersey Village in two thousand and one. And Isabel Cato did a fantastic job for the City of Jersey Village. She brought, recognized some sales tax that was incorrectly being reported and brought in millions that we were missing in revenue. The rainy day fund or the, the fund balance for the utility fund is for emergencies. We put enough money in there to pay for the things we know we're going to need to pay for. We should keep an amount of rainy day. I don't know that that fund has an amount that's required by state law, whereas the general fund does. But a lot of the thought process behind that was that if we had an emergency in the utility fund, we do have the general fund that we can use to pay for things there. It's merely a difference in how a finance person arranges and sets up their budgets. I do not disagree at all with Jennifer. This makes a lot of sense. Put money where money should go. And building up that utility fund reserve makes a lot of sense. But don't walk away with an, an impression that it was poorly managed or that there was no funds for an emergency. There were funds for an emergency. Mike Castro, the former city manager, was famous for stockpiling money for an emergency. To the point that when Austin Bleese came in, he identified this is inappropriate. You can't even justify your taxing of the citizens because you have a lot of money here. And we need to start working on some capital improvements and some maintenance that wasn't done. And that's how we got here. Happy to sit down, like they've mentioned, and chat for hours about this stuff. I enjoy it.
I want to just add, I did find the report and it is missing from the packet. Courtney, one F is missing, so we'll get that added. There is currently a hundred and fourteen-day reserve through the end of May. So we're not currently not out of, you know, not having money. There are just, there's two-point-three million worth of capital projects that were budgeted to draw down the fund balance by one-point-five million. So that's what's going to put us in that position at the end of the year, should all those projects move forward like that.
Correction, it was April two thousand and two that I started hanging out here.
I'm not trying to dominate. I just want to make sure we understand things.
You're just leading the discussion.
Okay. The other question I have, I know the answer, but I'd like you to explain it. There's bond authorization, the way I see it, would be if I had a Visa card with twenty-thousand-dollar credit on it. That's what I, that's what Visa says, hey, you can spend twenty grand on this credit card. But that, in my head, and especially how conservative I am, I'm not going to use all of that credit. I may use it for a new outfit or something, but I'll always pay it down. When I pay it down, if I don't pay it in the month that I use that, that I've spent it, interest gets tacked onto it. So bond authorization would be the credit card credit amount, the highest I can spend. The, the authorization would be, I'm sorry, the amount I spend would be, oh, let's say we took twenty million dollars in authorization, but we used five, we sold five million in bonds, that would be like five thousand on my credit card. Is that a fair comparison as far as the difference?
It is fair, except for we have to pay interest on it and we have to pay it back on time. Because we're paying it back over a period of time. So there's, there's no, we pay it by the end of the month and we don't have to pay the interest.
I think analogy that may apply, I think you're, it's, it's still credit, but a house mortgage, right? You can get approved for a one-million-dollar loan, but you're like, that's really a big stretch. I'm going to buy my standard house of whatever, less than a million dollars.
Now, I'm going to follow up with this. This is where I think some people have a problem. Why are we asking for twenty or twenty-four million dollars in authorization if we don't intend to use all of that authorization? That is, that's the ask.
So when we asked for the resolution back in May, it is a maximum, not to its seat number. We did not know what the bond market was going to do. We don't know what position we will be in on the day of sale. And so the bonds have been selling in past five years or so, bonds have been selling at a premium. And we have not had to issue as much principal toward a bond to get the money that we needed for construction. That is not the case anymore. And we are now actually having to cover issuance costs and everything else out of that authorization. So we may need twenty million for construction, but there may be two million in issuance costs associated with that. And just making those numbers up, those are not real. But, so we've got to factor in that type of stuff because the last thing we want is to get to the day of the sale and find out that we're, we've maxed out that authorization and we don't have enough money for the project at the end of the day.
As a rough analogy, going on the mortgage analogy again, issuance costs is like closing costs roughly?
Exactly, yes. And I love your mortgage analogy. I've been using that for, for years.
Hold on, I'm thinking. Okay, so let's say we sold bonds and for some reason, we didn't use the money. What happens then?
So when you sell bonds, you can use them for any lawful purpose that coincides with the authorization of the bonds. So say if we were using the city campus project, that one's pretty specific. We really, if we didn't spend the money on the city campus project, all we could do is pay it back and use it to pay debt service. And so we would just hold that money in reserve and pay it back until we're able to call the bonds. For the water and sewer projects, it would be, you know, it's for water sewer. So once we, if we were able to finish all the projects, say they came in under budget, we could continue to dip into those bonds to fund future projects if, if they were available.
But we couldn't like take that money and say, you know, we really need a rainy day fund. We need a nice, we couldn't do that. We couldn't sit on that money.
Absolutely not.
Just caveat, because I, I want to make sure I'm hearing the right things. Because last October, I, maybe it was last fall, we'll call it, if the, the council, the future council had borrowed funds, don't, don't use all the debt, don't use any of the debt, they can go to the citizens to, I thought they could go to the citizens with another proposal to re, rename the debt. Now, I could be wrong. I thought that was the case.
I, I would have to consult with our bond attorney for that because any reauthorization of the use of funds, I believe, would have to run back through the Attorney General's office. And I am not a lawyer and I did not sleep at a Holiday Express last night, so I don't want to answer that question.
So basically, if you borrow it, you better use it.
If I remember.
No, but you, if you borrow it and don't use it, you-
Have to pay it back.
Well, yeah, you have to pay it back, but you can't borrow it, not use it for what you borrowed it for, and then decide to use it for something else.
I just wanted to make sure, I understand that, again, because I do work in that field. But I just want to make sure we all understand this. Did anyone have any, I had some more things I wanted to ask.
Torgan, I'm sorry, we've got to keep everything the same. And I don't have any for you. Do you have another question?
I, I wanted to-
Go ahead, Connie.
Another thing that I did was I started looking at exemptions. And like what, usually my, with my, my property tax bill, we just pay it. I don't, I had to really dig into it. So now I have questions about that. The residential home exemption is twenty percent?
It's twenty percent. That's the maximum allowed by state law.
Then the city sixty-five and over exemptions is one thirteen?
Hundred thirteen thousand, yes.
What is the disabled?
I believe it's, it's different. Hang on, I, let me check that. I, I believe it's two hundred.
I understand some of the feelings of the crowd. We have, I have to treat everyone the same. We've already had citizen comment. I can't bring Mr. Torgan up and have him talk again, even if I wanted to, because I would have to provide that to everyone in the room, and we have already had that opportunity. I have every interest in communicating with you. Call me. I've put out my coffee. We've all given you opportunities. Please contact us. We're happy to speak with you. We have to continue with the meeting.
And again, I'm not asking because I have an agenda or I'm, I'm, these are questions that I'm asking for me and maybe for someone else who is not familiar with this. So it's two hundred thousand?
Yes.
What about disabled veterans? Is that one hundred percent?
Disabled veterans runs a little different and it is, that one is governed by state law. And it is based on the percentage of disability, so it's going to vary.
So if I qualified for more than one of those exemptions, could I collect, could I use them all at the same time?
You can use homestead and either overaged or disabled, but not both. You can also, if you have a disabled veteran exemption, that can partner with the other ones.
So once my appraised value comes out and I printed my thing and I looked at it and I took out my twenty percent, I think it was, then I had my taxable value. That's where the, that's when all the taxes start getting hit, like pulled out from all the different places, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments they want to make?
Oh, I had one other thing, I'm sorry. Well, these are emails come to me and I want to make sure they get answered. I've answered most of them. But I want to make sure, because some things come up. So for, in the city, I think it was the budget packet that we got from last month, Austin had said that Turner Building Cost Index was what was used to measure the construction trends in the United States and I- or the inflation, right, okay. So why, so then I looked up that, I found that. And then I looked up the U.S. Inflation Calculator, the Consumer Price Index. And the question rose, why didn't you use that instead of the Turner Building? I think I know the answer, but I didn't know if Robert would know the answer. I think I know the answer, but I didn't know if Robert would know the answer.
I can answer why Austin went with that index over another.
I have a similar question. Robert, a lot of this construction estimating, well, you know, this construction estimating was done by Brookstone Construction. And they, they provided this estimate and then they, didn't they give us some information about if we didn't execute this now, how we could see this price change over the next several months? And that's where I got my 0.5% a month.
Correct.
That's what I was trying to, as Brookstone made it very clear in their estimating of this construction cost. We can expect to see these, the rising costs go up about 0.5% between now and December.
Connie, to your point, I was always, I have always been under the impression that the Turner, TBI, Turner Building, that it's more, that theirs is based more regionally versus the Consumer Price Index, which is not, it's considered like a national average. That's how I, like it's, like that's how, that has always been my understanding. It could be wrong, but that was why I was-
Well, and also I thought, well, when I researched it, what I found, and if it was incorrect, my apologies. But CPI really tracks like cost of living stuff, like goods and services versus the TBI, which was really more construction cost trends. And that, when I went back to the memo or the budget packet, that made sense why that would be in there versus CPI. But I just wanted to, I didn't know if that was something that-
I do know that the Turner Building, that one is used by the companies that do like construction oversight services, the third-party oversight, when you have construction projects that have been financed and third-party has to oversee those.
Yeah, and it would make sense, right? I mean CPI is a broad-based index. Turner is based on construction in this region. And so that would, I'm not going to speak to the accuracy of it. But the point is cars are going up and, foreign cars are going up in price, right? And the cost of them is going up in price because of tariffs, but that doesn't mean mattresses are also going up in price.
Simon, did you have anything to add?
Any further discussion on this topic?
I, the only, last thing I'm gonna say is if anybody has any questions, if I can't answer them immediately, I will find an answer. I am happy to, to find an answer for you. And it sounds like we're even going to get a property tax calculator, right? On the website, on the city's website as well. So then it would be easier to sort of plug in your value instead of doing it on your phone calculator like I was doing at home.
That was very thorough. I appreciate it. I did have a question for Tommy. I think in the past, when there has been somebody in the audience that we did wanna speak in our charter, if we all voted to hear them, we, we could, with the exception, hear one person or with that, open the floor to everybody again. Because I feel like I've asked this in the past, just to, for the sake of communication sometimes.
I'd have to double-check what the procedural rules that were adopted were. But yeah, generally speaking, if council wants to allow an exception to the rule, they can certainly vote to do that.
I think, let me ask you one.
I think that's a really good question, because I have had citizens come to me about that before.
Because sometimes it does make sense for me, just to let somebody finish, then you have to email all of us and it's not an open discourse. And I understand the, the rule of not letting, you know, it be chaos and everybody speak. But from what I understand, when I ran the meeting as when Bobby was out of town, that is something that I did allow. I mean, if it made sense in the dynamics, especially like Ashley saying and, and just like being heard. I feel like we do need to, I don't want this meeting to go till midnight or anything. But if it was just a simple question, I feel like this is the time right now to listen.
You're absolutely right. It's a very, I've sat on your side and watched some of these get out of control and that's why we have rules in order, in a way that we do things. But I have also called on from up here, I've asked for Doris Mahalik to talk and other experts at times and we've been able to do that. So Torgan, I'm not gonna open the floor to everybody. I do, would like to hear, you had a couple of comments and you're very well-versed in not only the current public opinion, but this specific topic. If you don't mind coming up here, give you a few minutes to make some more comments.
Thank you.
I don't remember what they were now. Connie, yes, five more questions and I only have space for four, for four.
I, I, I hope that having this on the agenda in the first place shows that we are trying to have communication, because I've never seen this happen before.
This is the most open I've seen the meeting and I think it's, I think it's fantastic and I think it'll, it'll help. So, so my, one of my concerns about the CEOs and what the finance manager is, I'm not sure you're-
Ms. Brown, the Finance Director.
Finance Director. So the CEOs, when you put, when you issued the, and I'm sure it's because the attorneys wanna write it as broad as possible, right? But you mentioned in both of the CEOs that the monies can be used for buildings. With no speci, nothing specific. So if they're both written for buildings, it means if you wanted to build an outhouse behind the police station, that would qualify and the money could be spent on that.
So the reason that the water and sewer includes buildings, because we have buildings at our water and sewer plants. And so that's why that piece was included in there, because those buildings need upgrades and things like that. So you, you can't just have a water plant and have the clarifiers and all that without having a building to house the equipment.
Understood, but when you, when you actually go to market with the bonds, do you say the buildings are only for water and sewer function? Or is it just they, they're gonna be buildings?
So the way that the preliminary official statement is worded is that the 2025B certificates, which are the ones for the water and sewer improvements, are for water, sewer and drainage-related infrastructure.
Okay. And then the other question I had for you when we were talking about interest rates, which Connie, you brought up a very good point about interest rates. My understanding and the research I've done shows that interest rates are trending downward. So that delaying this to a bond vote, I've been told that bonds carry a lower, get a better interest rate because they were voted on by the citizens. So they get probably half a point better to start. And then if we delay it till the end of the year or November, which is I think the first time by statute it can be voted on, the interest will be lower. That's the trend, if there's a trend downward anyway. So even though we're delaying things and there's a chance things are gonna get more expensive. But you know, who knows what, you know, interest, I, I think we're looking at things through a lens of COVID and the massive inflation that we had in the past and things are, I'm not trying to be political nationally. But things are trending downward cost-wise. Oil and gas is less expensive, which means roads are gonna be less expensive to build. Things are gonna, you know, everything becomes less expensive, transportation and all that. So I understand everyone's point about they're worried about inflation and that's certainly important. But I think that we don't really know what it's, it's gonna be. I think people right now are betting that it's gonna be, that things are gonna be less expensive. Your cars, for instance, it's a really good, there are a lot of people who make money in the car business and there are a lot of people who lose a lot of money in the car business. The money you guys were making is because of COVID. Now, I'll tell you, the dealer, I deal a lot with car dealers. That's my primary vertical in my business are car dealers. And there are a lot of them that have been having to write down huge amounts on their used car inventory because they overpaid for it and now they're gun-shy and they're backing off, which is probably why your vehicles aren't meeting their, their minimum on the, the reserve on the auctions. So I'm just saying, we don't know what happened a year ago. No one would think that would be the case, but look what happened. And that's it. Thank you so much for letting me have a minute more. And thank you for the explanation.
Mr. Torgan, before, I will stress again. One of the things that Jennifer brought up is she has a phone call on Monday. And I think we all know where it's gonna go. And I would, I would ask, when you get a chance, and I'm happy to chat with you tomorrow. If you wanna, if you wanna bring more, have a long discussion about it. But my official position, please submit that as soon as you can.
So another option, and I, in my mind, it's an option. I don't know legally if it's an option for you guys. But the other option is, I'm happy to show you I have the requisite number of, of signatures on the, with validated. And rather than formally file it, give you guys the chance to say, you know what? We decided to put this out for a vote and we're gonna go for bonds instead of CEOs. So that this, I don't want, I'm not here to make the city look bad. So if that helps, I'm, I'm, we can have that discussion. I'm more than open to it.
Tommy, there's no reason they can't submit and amend with additional signatures later on, correct?
I've gotta file it, I believe it's six days prior to the 21st. That's my deadline to be within statute.
I, I have to ask, I, I have to ask, because I'm, I'm really confused. If you have the required number of signatures, why wouldn't you just turn it in? I mean, I understand, I, I think I understand your, the reasoning from what you were saying earlier was that you wanted to give everybody that wanted to sign an opportunity to sign. I truly understand that. But if you, if you have, if you're able to accomplish your goal already, I, I don't understand why you would delay when, you know, we have protocols we have to follow. And I just, to me, it just, I guess maybe I'm missing the point.
It's, it's a couple of things. One, it's about inclusion and I, that one kinda hit me out of the blue. Because my thought was, I'm gonna get to that 5% number and here you go. But as I talked to people and they came to the house, they were like, thank you so much for doing that. And it really was the first time they felt their voice had been heard. There was, there was people, there were people here who asked me, can I come tomorrow and sign? I already have, I do already have enough signatures. I wouldn't tell you if I didn't. And, and we have, and we printed out the voter ID roll or downloaded it from Harris County the Thursday before I started collecting signatures. And then everybody who comes in, they show an ID or they have their voter ID card and we verify it electronically to make sure it's, it's valid and they're already in force. That, because there's sometimes you get a, you become a voter, but it doesn't go into effect for another few days because it's a 30-day lag. So we verified all that. So I'm confident in them. And I was just, I didn't have to turn them in yet, so I thought, we'll just wait. I didn't, I didn't understand the downside for you guys and I didn't, I didn't know she had a call on Monday. I didn't know any of that to just now, so I'm still kinda processing that. But again, I'm not here to hurt the city. I moved back here. I lived here from 12 to 15. And then I, I moved out into the country and had cows and all that. And then moved back, and then moved back here in '21. So I really like it here. It's a, it's a great community. I love the police force. I love the, I used to volunteer for the fire department when I was here before. So I like it here and I'm really not trying to hurt it, hurt you guys. So that's why I said, I'm sure everyone who signed those petitions would be more than happy for me not to turn them in if we knew this was gonna go for a bond election in the fall. And if that helps you guys, I'm open to having that, that deal. So as long as we're not breaking any laws or anything else.
Just for what it's worth, I can double-check. I don't think it's anything that can be worked around.
Yeah, I don't think so. You and I can talk tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will have some good answers from attorney and city secretary. I would like to start processes so that they can take the appropriate actions they need to. And then in July, we can have an appropriate discussion with all of the documentation ready so that these guys can make the right votes and decisions that they, they need to. And I don't wanna put any, I don't want any negative impacts on the city. I have no problem with citizens exercising their right. That is not a problem. I voiced my opinions at the budget meeting and wanted this moved and this is where we stand today and that's okay. If we can submit this, I would appreciate it.
Sorry, I didn't realize I still had my turn. I was waiting my turn. I'm so sorry. No, I just wanted to say, this is one of the main reasons why I think sometimes it's so necessary to let people come back up. Because his heart's in the right place and I feel like we're more alike than different on what we really are trying to get done here. We just need to understand each other better. And I mean, I understand rule in order as well. But I think what we wanna really hit home to all of the people who signed the petition is one of the main reasons we did it was because when we had our budget workshop and the HB 19 came and it was really going to damper our ability to even take on this type of debt. And so that's how we were advised at that time and it was such like a short time. It felt pressed for us. Like, I don't like how it made us look like we were trying to do things real quick and dirty. I hate that part of it. But if it's in the best interest of the city for the 20, 30-year plan, then that's what I was elected up here to make those decisions. But I feel like if we both really all with the same thing, we, we do need you and everybody who, who is in the petition to kind of put our heads together and be on, you know, the same side. Because we all are here, like you said, for JV. So I, I do appreciate you allowing him to come back up. And I wanted to say, like from our, our side, the CEO was not done, so we could just not have votes. Like it just, we did it because of the pressure of the HB Bill 19 and what it could really impede for us. And I, I welcome a vote. I feel like everybody needs to be all in on some of the things. Do I think we need to vote on every single project? Nah, I mean, like we don't need to, you know, sewers and all that good stuff. But if it's something that is nostalgic and it is like the heart of JV, I, I understand it. And I want the support of the city. I want y'all to be just as proud of the project as we are. Because I think it's, it has the potential to be really, really, really pretty and nice. Sorry, I was waiting. Sorry for interrupting you.
One other question that, that has come up, that people have asked me is, why did we, we knew this expense was coming. We just had an election in May. Why weren't the bond, why weren't they not bond issues on that election when there was gonna be a better turnout than just for a bond election?
One more, one more addition. I'm so sorry. But another thing about the HB 19 proposal was if something did not get approved, we couldn't wait, we had to wait five years before it was even brought up again. And that scared us because there is, as Ashley said, there's a lot of misinformation that's done. I, I still have a hard time wrapping my head around why people do that part of it. But I think it's scary to know that we need something and somebody could make up these strange facts, even if we have 15 meetings on something. And it, it does and it influences, it scares people and people do a lot of, they'll vote strongly if they're, it's fear tactics work. And that was another thing that kind of hit me home is the, the not being able to vote on anything again for five years on a project is scary to me, especially with water and sewer.
I knew with HB, I thought, I thought the, the rule had just extended the, the CEO rule. So you couldn't issue a CEO right now on the pool because there's a three-year moratorium on it because it was voted down and by a bond. But I thought even with HB 19, as long, you had 66% approval to pass, to incur debt. And that if the bond failed, you could rewrite the bond a little bit different and vote on it again right away. There was not a, there's not a moratorium on-
May and November, yes.
You would have to revote on it, but we would be prohibited from issuing CEOs for five years.
Right.
I have a answer to your May question, why not on May? As you'll find out, if this goes to bond, we have by the August, so effectively three months before or two and a half months before, council has to put an item up for election.
Call to election.
So for example, in February, when we talked about- So, for example, in February, when we talked about the design, had we determined that that was the final thing, and we were going to proceed forward with that, and finance it and everything, we would have had to call that probably two weeks later, within.
And we didn't have any of the information back until three days prior to that meeting in February. There was absolutely no way it could have possibly be done for that point.
So one of the thought, just in the way you guys go about your, the process, to your home example, right? You decide, I want to go buy a house for $500,000. And then you go find a house, or you have an architect design, you have a $500,000 house. Why is it that we're doing these, spending all this money on design for these elaborate projects, no financing in place, instead of saying, hey, we need, I want to spend $5 million on a new city hall? And I find an architect, and I find a builder, and if they say, well, gosh, for what you're asking for, I gotta, I gotta have 6 million for it, then you say, well, what do you have to cut out to get to 5? Because the bank's only going to lend me, you know, 500,000 for our house. So just consider maybe doing it a little bit different, and deciding, what should you really be spending on the building? And not buying something, you know, not buying a Ferrari, and then worrying about getting maintenance on it. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Final comments on this agenda item?
Well, there was something that was just said, sorry, I can't. There was something that was just said, and I take it for granted, again, because I work in the utility district field. One thing that a lot of people don't realize, is that there is a formal process for everything, and everything has to be planned out. So the comments about why it wasn't on the May ballot, that, they're absolutely right. We can't just say, hey, let's throw it on the ballot, it doesn't work that way. And it's not something that we choose, it's the, it's the state. And so with things like that, I mean, please ask us, if, again, if we can't answer it, we'll, we have experts here who can answer those questions. There's nothing nefarious or weird about it, or any of those, at least not from, I can, I'm speaking for myself, but I can trust that it's not coming from them either. And so I just kind of want to reiterate that.
And if you can go ask it, hey, where do I find this fine item, or where do I find this expense? Hit your financials, it'll help. And you can, and you can ask AI to explain it, what does that mean?
So my comment there, actually, the city manager has inspired me to actually hire my own person developer just for that. The city's looking into their next budget, and they have aggressively been looking at automation and AI incorporation to a lot of different parts of the city for cost savings. All right, I think everyone is done, we're going to move on to, Simon, do you have any further comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, can I say that again?
I just want to make sure since you're remote, did you have any final comment on that item before I move on?
No, if you're moving on to the pool, that's fine, I think we've thoroughly gone through the CIP and the.
We are going to move on to item agenda three, discussion concerning the Jersey Village Pool. There's some background here, the, we have been trying to come up with a solution for a pool. And I was not up here when we closed the pool, and actually got a chance to talk with Robert a little bit about what happened. The bottom line is, we knew the pool had some serious issues, but in the last few days of its use, the pool became cloudy, and it became very apparent that what the experts have been telling us, that the pool pump was incapable of circulating and treating the water correctly, it was in fact incapable, and the pool remained in a cloudy state. At this point, the pool is gone. We've had two failed bond proposals, and we don't really have a direction forward. And we talked about this for, I think, a little over an hour on May 12th. And at this point, we, we know, we're headed towards a bond election, no doubt. Would like to get from council some ideas on the size, scope, location, funding, how are we going to move forward so that we can have a plan? Brian McCollough is trying to work on third-party financing of it. The public just needs some direction. Mr. Chorgan brought up, a lot of people signed this petition because they were upset about the pool. It is very, very evident the public would like a pool. How do we accomplish this?
Okay, well, I would like Robert to explain the process of how we get to dirt to an actual pool with everything, like, go through, how does the bidding work, how does the build work? I think we need to get on the same page with that. Could you explain that to me, please?
Yes, so essentially, the city could issue a request for qualifications for pool design specifications, RFQ, Request for Qualifications. Soliciting firms qualified to design and engineer a pool. We could, city staff evaluates those requests for qualifications based on a set of standards. Recent experience is usually considered. Once an RFQ, the RFQ is evaluated, you know, staff will move forward with the most qualified designer, and at that point, you would begin the design process for the design bid build. Once you have a design, that's where you can get community input, staff input, you know, you go through the design process. Typically, they will try and give you an opinion of probable costs. No contractor wants to kind of tell you a price, and then when the bids come back, it's higher than they anticipated. I believe that's happened before. So you would essentially, you know, get the design, get the opinion of probable cost, you would go out for a competitive construction bid, and then at that point, you can evaluate the construction bids based off of the financials. And history of, you know, previous performance, you want to get the lowest qualified bidder.
And that's how we ended up with the clubhouse, the cost that we have at the golf course, is we got estimates, and the bids came in much higher. And then one of the things that as we talk about this, I've heard some talk, well, they said 10 million, 7 million, 5 million, why is the number keep changing? It depends, when we're talking about this, make sure we're talking apples to apples, because a lot of times, I've had people come in, I can build pools for 3 million, awesome, let me see the details, and then you find out that they are, they have a residential pool pump. Or the pool's shallow, or they didn't consider the costs of the bathrooms, or numerous things. So just make sure we're trying to talk about the same thing.
So after we, so we request for qualifications, you guys evaluate, making sure they're, you know, you know, they really do what they say they do, right?
And this is just for design?
No, this is for request for qualifications, right?
The request for qualifications, just for people to design.
Okay, so that, does that cost?
I'm terrible at pushing these buttons. So that selection under state law is required to be made based on qualifications first. Only then do you get to discuss the price.
Okay, rephrase that again?
Qualifications for professional services, architecture and engineering, which are all, these are the design phase services, that's going to be done upfront. Our, that selection is, under state law, required to be made by qualifications only.
So that.
Well, let me back up. By qualifications, you select the most qualified, and then you negotiate a fair price. And if the fair price can't be negotiated, you move on to the next most qualified, but you can't make that selection based on price. And, and you get, more often than not, engineers and architects get real uncomfortable when you ask them to send, send us your rates, send you your quote for the project upfront, because they've got requirements in their, in their licensing boards that, that regret that.
So if Robert is receiving RFQ, for, he puts out the RFQ, he receives all these vendors, or whatever, you, if they send a dollar sign after their name, you can't use that dollar sign as the qualifier in that decision. It has to just be whether or not they are going to be good for our design.
Correct.
Can I skip ahead?
Oh, sorry, ahead.
Sorry, to step four and five, we get design, process, and input. Before it goes out to competitive bid, you have to be able to pay for it. Right? So you have an estimate somewhere, probably from the person that you got from an RFQ process, and they're going to give you an estimate. Now, it's probably, it sounds topsy-turvy, fiscally conservative, which means it's probably the highest estimate you're going to get. That's your credit limit, if you will, you're qualified for mortgage. Bring back a analogy that's been overused tonight by me. And then it's, then you can go for your bid, for, hey, we're going to have, or authorized to spend this much. And this could be, you decide at that point, per Mr. Chorgan's earlier thing, we don't want to spend above this much. Like, this is our limit, this is just insane, we're not going to do this, or whatever, and you go back to the drawing board, and so on and so forth, or you decide to pursue. And if that case, you pay cash, if you've saved it, or you go out for funding for other mechanisms, is that the right, like, I guess, 5B?
Yes, that's correct.
I also want to point out, because I think this is, and you have to correct me if I'm wrong on this, but with the golf course, golf course clubhouse, design, the design was there, and then, then it went out for bid, and then when it went out for bid, and the bid was significantly higher than the estimate, and you had to go back and redesign to make it fit the correct amount of money that was willing to be spent, did that not cost an additional design fee to redesign?
We paid additional design fees, and Robert, if I remember, because of all the delays, we did not get as good of a product for the same price, like, this.
Like, for value?
What we have now.
Yes.
We paid more square foot, and more, more money for what we, the value we got, if we had just bit the bullet on the design at the beginning.
Yes, correct, that's correct.
I just, I guess for me, the thing is, because I understand the idea of, here's 5 million dollars, give me what you got. Like, I get that, like, as a homeowner, I mean, not that I have 5 million dollars, but as a homeowner, like, that's how, it's like, I'm willing, like, this is what I'm willing to spend for this project. The, I think the problem is, is you have to understand sometimes, is those things may not add up in this type, like, in what you're doing with government work, because of the laws that require us to follow through in certain order of this stuff, and sometimes those things happen. And I just, I just want to make sure everybody understands the process, and I appreciate you asking the questions, Connie, because I think the process is confusing for, for everyone. It's confusing for us, but it's also confusing to the average citizen that goes out and votes, and doesn't understand why we're doing things the way we're doing them.
And you can see how easy it is to, it seems like out of order, but how easy it is to take that and spin it into a way that looks like we're being sneaky, or why did we even do that? Yeah, like, we're, I understand it, and I, I really, really, really want to dial up the optics and the transparency and the digestibility of all of it, because I, I feel like, if the more people we have in the, like, in the audience that really understands the steps too, y'all talk to your pods, those pods talk to those pods, and then we can get something passed that everybody wants, because I think everybody wants the same thing.
So one of the lessons learned through that golf course process, Greg Holden taught me, he's, if you don't like the price now, just wait till we move on in a few months, it's going to go up. So if you want to, if you want to control costs, start at the beginning. So we did make some cuts in order to do that. Tonight, in order to come up with a plan, there's, there's really three things that I see this revolving around, and that is the size or scope, location, and funding source. Is there one of those that is easier to tackle, that we want to discuss first?
I think location might be the.
Yeah, I think location, you're right.
Just the easiest option, I don't know, I just feel like that's probably the least amount of opinions, maybe?
Okay, then let's move through and get some opinion on the location.
I, I see two options, one is very feasible, it's where it was before. The other option is right over there, on these, effectively where Old City Hall is, and maybe where this whole complex is, depending on feasibility and size and whatnot. I mean, there might be another option, but I'm not sure that those are nearly as palatable as these two.
We could buy another church. Knock it down.
We can tear down Joe Meyer's.
There's another church in the city, I'm just saying, a few. I have heard, I was actually surprised the first time I heard it suggested to move it here, but I actually don't dislike the idea for this, from the, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't feel very strongly either way, but I do like the idea of it not being in the floodplain. As a person that lives in the floodplain, I, I do think there's a value to that, because you know, the, anything built now, if we are to rebuild at the pool, it all has to be high. So, like, all, like, the pool, the pump equipment, all that stuff does have to be above, and above it to whatever the number is that I'm assuming FEMA has chosen for us. So I just, you know, I do think that's something to keep in mind, not that it was ever really a big concern, being there, water's water.
I share the same idea. I think, in a weird way, maybe this was all a happy accident, that everything happened the way it did, considering the floodplain, the parking, and I know the sewer smell from the treatment plant sometimes is lofting over at the pool, and I just really love the idea of a city complex here. And if my vision of developing the other side of Senate, you know, goes through, and we have like a little mini downtown, how adorable would this whole little section be, like, in the 10, 20-year plan? But I also don't have very strong feelings about it, I'm just thinking in the 10 to 20-year, if it rains excessively a couple years, is it going to mess up the pool and the buildings, and, like, are we protecting ourselves in 10 years by moving it here?
I, I don't have an opinion either way, or, like, strongly, so I agree with you there, but I have a feeling that our city, our citizens will want, will have a strong feeling one way or the other. And this may be super unpopular, but, you know, just to see either or, and see what people think, even on location, because some people would say the floodplain's an issue, some people will say, if you move it here, it's going to block traffic and create a lot of traffic, and it's going to be noisy for people who live here. I don't want to be part of that city council that made that decision, if a bunch of people will hate us in the future. If we put, I'm just saying, like, there are some variables there, and before I make a decision like that, then I would want a little input from the people who live around here, because I don't live in this vicinity, but I can imagine the traffic that it might create. I do like that the police station and the fire station are here, because then they would, there would be a safety, right, they would, I do like that. So really, I think either the current location, or here, for me, are fine. But again, I personally would like a little community input on that, because the people who live in this vicinity are the ones that are going to have to deal with it, and again, into. And again, in 10 years, there could be like, what idiot put a pool here?
I know somebody who just knocked on 300 doors.
I also think there's something to be said about, I've had, I have heard a few comments on this, about the idea of the pool not being along the Bayou Trail, that, that as far as, like, for, I would say, access. And I hadn't thought about that myself, and a neighbor brought it up to me, and it, in some, with some, like, recent events in our side of the neighborhood, I can kind of see the, I can see the appeal for that, so I do also appreciate that.
Simon?
Did not have it by the Bayou Trail.
Give Simon a chance.
You looking at me?
Yeah, everybody's talking about location, so.
Okay, so, so general thoughts on the pool? You know, my gut reaction is that voters would approve a pool expense somewhere in the $3 to $6 million range. Looking, and I didn't, I wasn't involved in the pool PAC or the pool bond committee or anything like that, but getting a general idea of what the old pool was and what seemed to be the priorities, it seems to me you could build a 25-yard by 40-foot, which is eight-ling pool, with the appropriate depths of, you know, five feet on one end and three and a half feet on the other end, and tag onto the side of that a 45, 40-foot by 30-foot diving pool, with a low dive and a high dive, that sort of thing, a 10-foot deep, and then have a separate but adjacent baby pool, basically 30 by 30, roughly, you know, 18 inches or two feet deep, whatever is appropriate. And when you start looking at that, you're talking about a pool that's probably in the range of 200,000 to 250,000 gallons, maybe with decking, 8,000 square feet, et cetera. Coping, I think, was like 300, I just ran some numbers. And so it seems to me you start running this, and then you think, well, what is the pool equipment that you need to have the appropriate circulation? And that's, yeah, that's going to be a couple hundred thousand, but bottom line is, I think that we can come in with a pool, working with the right designer, and meet all these requirements that people, people want, the community gathering place, et cetera. Also, I know that statements have been made about the existing pool location and the poor shape of the old bathrooms, and I don't know, I may have mentioned this before, but the, the way that the restrooms are done up at the Memorial Park is actually very intelligent, where there, you know, four or five individual toilets on each end, and then a big open area where people can wash their hands, et cetera. And so you've got privacy, but you don't have all the, the things where you get, for example, you get the kids from Jersey Village High School sneaking in and abusing, you know, areas, et cetera. So bottom line, I think we could go out and develop a pool in the same general location. I think that trying to tie it into the location of the existing City Hall, because of everything that's in flux with the existing City Hall, or moving people, et cetera, and then what that would do to the, to the neighborhood, those people who live right on Lakeview, I'm just not inclined to go with that as a location, but I do believe that we could work with the designer, come up with a plan, a suitable plan, that would kind of check all the boxes, and be a community-appropriate pool. And I want to emphasize that, from the standpoint that, you know, we don't live in a, in a neighborhood where every house is a million five, and we've got this unlimited tax revenue, property tax revenue coming in, and we don't have as much economic development and sales tax revenue as we need. So while we do need a community pool, we've got to build it appropriate with, with what we can afford. And for that reason, I think that we could come up with a design and have a couple of town halls with residents involved, so that they can sign off and weigh in on, on the design, and then, you know, at that point, figure out a way to get people to bid it, understanding that, you know, we can't pay $10 million for a pool. Our budget for a pool is, whatever it is, 3, 5, 6, whatever it is, and figure out what we can get for that amount of money. So that's kind of my general thoughts on it.
Okay, so, I've heard location-wise, fairly good with either location. The old one was certainly the direction Simon was going. The old one is going to present cost savings if we reuse any portions of the existing But I think that's the best synopsis for location right now, and moving on to other topics is going to help. Simon pointed out that he believes a bond would pass. I have doubts, based on being very involved, we did community input, we did a lot of things. The, what are y'all's thoughts? I don't know.
I guess, I guess for me, the one thing is, I want a pool so bad. Like, it's ridiculous how much I want a pool. But the problem is, is so many people are coming across as saying, like, we got zero community input, and that this was, you know, a surprise, we didn't get what residents wanted. I mean, between the pool bond committee and even before that, when it went up to bond the first time, I can't even count how many times we had public meetings, we had town halls, we had, 4th of July, we had at Founder's Day, there are tables, please come, give us your opinion. Parks and Rec, the volunteers with Parks and Rec stood out there for hours, waving people down with different, like, mockups of ideas, like, tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like. I mean, I remember, because that was, you know, that must be Founder's Day, with the lemonade, or, but, like, it has gone on and on and on, so I guess for me, I'm just, I, are we just waiting for the right input? Is it, do we, do we, you know, what is it? Because we have done, I believe, I feel, we have gone above and beyond in trying to involve the community in this, and there doesn't seem to be, you know, I don't know what else we're looking for. You know, we can't, we're not even going to be, we can't even do CO bonds for sewer. So that, to me, the idea that, water and sewer, like, things you have to have for your house to operate properly. So I guess I'm just confused as to how it's going to, like, how it would pass for a bond, with a bond at this point. I think people want us to pay, pay cash for it. And, and that's fine.
I think it will pass.
If people want us to pay cash for it, that's fine, but it's going to have to get in line and wait.
I think that it was the digestibility of this, you know, like, our budget session where we talked about the other stuff, like, we do usually have very few in attendance to those, and it's the, the input. And to answer your question, we've brought up the pool in 35 meetings. It's, it's, it's really been a topic we've talked about, but I think it was the digestibility, and then there was, the number wasn't clear enough to some, and then the misinformation was enough to scare enough, that it just, I think we have the, the people who have eyes and ears open about the pool now, that I think that they will be digesting the information we put out for this next thing, and I really do think that the next bond, third time's a charm. I think it will, it will pass. I think we need to do something very similar to the nostalgic design. Whoa, sorry about that. I think the nostalgia about the pool is what resonates the most with the citizens, and as much as I would love that to be a $3 million cost, I think realistically, a bond of six is probably going to be the cheapest we could do, and not saying we have to use all six, but to just get a modest mirror of what we had before. I think that, I love the idea of the bathrooms, like Simon said, also the high schoolers not being able to go in there, great idea. But to me, that is the only thing that makes sense, is that, that will pass. And I think moving it here, as much as it would be convenient, I think the price tag would say eh, shit for a lot of people, so I think original location is the safest choice for the budget we want. Full of facts.
When you said that you think the citizens would be fine with a $3 to $6 million, did you mean bond? That citizens would be, did you mean bond when you said that?
Yeah, you know what, Connie, the audible here is really bad, so I've been trying to decipher what everybody's saying while they're saying it, so say that again.
So, ooh, jeez, sorry, wake up. Can you hear me okay now? When you said that you think that the citizens would be fine with a $3 to $6 million number, did you mean bond?
You know, bonds might be appropriate, I mean, because, and I say that from the perspective that when I talked to residents, they weren't opposed to a pool, they were opposed to a $10.1 million bond. So I think that a pool bond with a specific design that is in that, you know, to me, what a sweet spot is going to be between the 3 and 5, 6, I think that that would get voter approval. On the other hand, if the city has available funds, for example, if, if some of the land sales or potential land sales come to fruition, you know, that might be a source to cast flow all or part of the, of the expense of a pool. You know, but I would think in the interim, we could at least move forward on figuring out a design that checks the boxes and, and at that location that makes sense, and then, you know, and all of this will come into the budget meeting in terms of what, you know, what funds are available or coming in, or whether funds would be needed, but, but I believe that residents would support a reasonable-sized bond for a specific pool.
Does this, so, I just, I'm curious, would you guys place the need of a pool above the need of a new City Hall?
Place the need of a pool in front of a City Hall?
Because that's, so, because, this comes up because Simon made the comment, mentioned about the money from land sales, and that just, kind of, because, you know, we're selling land and funding projects, we're talking about funding projects and things like that, so I'm just curious, would you put a pool in front of a new City Hall? Because, and I say that because I've seen, I've seen some of these offices, you know, before, before our meeting tonight, and when I walked in, I walked into a person's office, and there is black stuff all over the wall, so, that I don't think was paint. So, I'm just-
And it's not a chalkboard?
It was not a chalkboard. It was not a chalkboard. It was coming out of the vent, and it was all over the wall, and I sat there looking at it going, you couldn't pay me enough to work in this, in this environment. So I'm just, to me, I don't, that makes me feel like we're putting a fund over necessity.
I think-
Which kills me to say.
I think you, if you prioritize what you do at that City Hall, I think council chambers 50 years from now shouldn't be here. Right? And we've said this before, we said this in February, so I don't want to repeat it all and go down those roads, but I think, yeah, getting staff out of those digs is a bigger priority than the pool. That cost of getting staff out of those digs is not the price of the COs, though. It's $3 million. I would love to bring Public Works over to this side, because, one, it could pay for itself potentially, and the ROI on that is huge.
Absolutely. I agree with getting rid of Taylor Road, 100%.
But, and, but that is not as high as getting staff out of those digs, and then we can talk pool, and I think both of those are feasible to do in parallel with the pool.
So if we basically phase the City Hall, or the City Hall, phase that, like, bare-bones phase it, and then the pool, is that what you mean?
That, yes, I know that goes against the design that we were given and the reasons behind that, but I'm just saying-
I'm asking-
Yes, that is my clarification.
I'm fine with that. I also want to make sure that if we went in that direction, one of the, I don't want to say, I don't want to say concerns, the city is doing too much all at once, and it's, why can't we stop and do, finish one thing before we go? That was something that was said to me. So I want to make sure that if we went in that direction, that people would understand, you hadn't, you guys, we heard you here, we heard you here, so we're trying to make both happen at the same time without blowing our budget, blowing the accounts. You see what I'm saying?
I just feel like, hear me out here, bonding for sewer and water, bonding for the pool. And bonding for sewer and water, knowing that that's going to be an ongoing, like, every five-year rolling bond, from here on out, like, in perpetuity, right? So bonding for sewer and water, bonding for City Hall in some capacity, bonding for a pool. Also, we're gonna still have to raise your water rates in a significant manner.
Don't forget about streets.
And then there's the street issue. So I'm just saying, because we, all of these things have to be paid for in some way, and then we have a very high, high expected standard for our police and fire department, for our emergency services, which we should have. But I mean, but as far as, like, the expectation of a citizen, like, our expectation is really high, and those things do come at a high fiscal cost. So I'm just laying it all out here, because I feel like this is a conversation my husband and I have had many times about other finances, not city-related, that, you know, you've got to prioritize.
Well, it kind of reminds me of, like, the refrigerator stops working, the dishwasher's leaking, the roof has a hole in it, and then we have to, like, decide which one we're going to pay for, like, prioritize all these important things, and then decide, and then look at our account and say, I can't afford to replace my roof, my refrigerator, my dishwasher at the same time, which one's going, I mean, that's kind of what you're saying reminds me of. And then, one of the things that I thought about is, if we went any of that direction, would we be able to reallocate our capital improvement projects in our CAP to delay improvements of certain things? I know that sounds bad, but I'm just asking, because we're talking about it, like, in order to get that modest pool, like, is there something that could be pushed a little bit so we could get what, what the city wants?
And I think that's a fair question. I struggle, because I look at the CIP, but, you look at CIP, it's not fun, like, there's nothing, you know what I mean, like, it's like, if you're looking at your, you're looking at your expenses, and you're thinking, what can I cut? Yeah, there's no Netflix in there to cut. It's, everything in there, to me, you know, in my opinion, that's all infrastructure-related projects. These are not, and, and, to be honest, we've gotten into this situation because of previous councils' refusal to maintain, and so now we are having to do, our hand is being forced. How many pipes burst last summer? Anybody remember that?
I have one in my yard.
How many, no, but I mean, like, how many weeks do we, I mean, it seemed like all summer long, every three days, it was another email, thanks, Robert, but another email about something else bursting somewhere, and then it becomes an emergency? And those are very expensive, like, it costs us quite a bit when that happens.
Think the residents 25 years from now, even though they'll no longer be paying off the bond debt, will be grateful for the vision that we have for the next 10 years. I hope they also have a swimming pool to-
And I don't disagree, and I'm, and I, I want to make sure everybody's clear here, I am not trying to be negative, I don't think I'm a negative person, I'm starting to wonder, but, I, I mean, really, but I do, I feel like it's a realistic conversation to have, you know, this is, it sucks. It just does, but this, I think if it comes down to it, we got to start talking about, we need to start talking about need, and where things belong in that hierarchy, and I understand, I understand the pool. Like, I have two very angry and bitter children at home.
Well, can we put the, if we go by that, can we put the pool in the CIP and plan for it the way we do all the other projects? You can?
Does that prevent us from bonding for it, though?
No.
Say that again?
I mean, yes, and the pool's been in the CIP before, but without the defined funding there to do it, like, it was defined, you're going to fund it, it was bonds two years in a row, because the cash flow wasn't there, because the pool- It was bonds two years in a row because the cash flow wasn't there because the pool, this is when streets and sewers and everything started costing 3X of what it did, you know, four years before. So we can put it in the CIP and we can say we're gonna target this date and we can try to save the funds. But.
I don't see, I don't, I don't understand realistically when we're gonna come up with an extra 6 million. Like, as a reserve, you know, like, hey, we found this 6 million, or we've, we've saved this.
I think a bond is the only way.
And with that, I, I mean, I think part of the discussion, and hopefully if we can move forward on some ideas generate, we can, uh, give Mr. McCauley some legs to run with. I don't expect him to do all the heavy lifting. I wouldn't at all. I mean, any, any bonus to the city would be great and we'd be grateful. Um.
Well, one of the comments too, on Monday, when we talked about pool, city campus COs, was by doing COs for the city campus project, when we sell land, which we are actively in the process of doing, that will free up some funds to do thi- this project.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying if we had the COs for the city campus, then that would free up the funds that we were planning on using from the sale to do the pool project? Is that what you mean?
One of the things Austin brought up is if you CO the city campus project, then when you start selling land, there's funding available for things like this. Or to replenish the utility rainy day fund.
All right, I'm gonna dive in and change the topic and re-center it. Great question. And we're gonna have, no, we're gonna have to talk about that. What is our priority with this? Should we decide to pursue a pool? I would, I think the pool itself, and I think infra- infrastructure, meaning bathhouses and larger, any of these things, if you open up the concepts from, or from, from Councilman Hunsaker from 2024, there's support spaces for locker rooms and changing rooms and all that. That's gonna have to be temporary at best until we can fund that later, I would think. Pool itself, the aquatic center, according to Councilman Hunsaker, a pool, baby pool, maybe something else, whatever, tops out total, I think 6 million is reasonable. But that 6 million probably includes escalation allowance, contingency and design fees, which is about 25% of a project. So now we're talking 4.5-ish total for today's dollars of a pool.
So are you, are you suggesting bonding for the design? Like, including the cost of the design as part of the bond? I, I only ask because like, or was the idea to cash pay design services and then, because we can't go, from what I recall, like, we could, we, even if we can't, like, if we cash pay design services, we can't go out for bid and then put it up for a bond because that bid would no longer be accurate. Like, they don't, nobody's gonna insure a six month bid.
No, no, no.
But I was just, I just wanted to try to make sure I understand.
No, no, I mean, we'd get estimates on those designs like we did before, right? And then we'd get that bond. I mean, because we can't, it takes six months to design, to make a qualified design from which you can send it out for bid to build it.
So, so what you're, so to me, what's being described is doing exactly what was done? What Councilman Hunsaker did already, right? Like, it's the same thing, like.
Right, but for a much lower amount because the difference.
So what we, so what you're saying is, was that, I think that's, is that option two? Do you know what I'm talking about in the packet?
Yeah, I mean, we.
It was taken, so you're, but you're taking away the, like, the actual, because the concept in there included, like you're saying, like, the buildings and all of that. So take all the buildings away. You're just talking about the hole in the ground with the water.
And the deck.
Like, the pump that is required for that. And that's the, I just wanted to make sure I was talking about concept two. Um, no, it was six.
Yeah, this total one was 8.1, the total. When you're talking about just the aquatic part, 3 million plus Austin pointed out, you're gonna have to add in the, uh, there was a couple of things that Austin pointed out. That's how I ended up at the 3.6. So this is going to be 3.6, 4 million at least.
Or just the pool and the pumps, the pump house or whatever?
Uh, yes, and that is soft, that is not including any soft cost contingency. And one of the reasons we keep going back to the Councilman Hunsaker is because every proposal, every person who's brought me a bid and said, hey, my person can build a pool for less than you can, once you dive into the details, their cost estimates align with Councilman Hunsaker.
Well, the same with the pool in that neighborhood that, uh, got refurbished.
Will Chester.
Call it out. Will Chester's, I mentioned it, you compare theirs, they did a renovation of their pool and the cost estimates match Councilman Hunsaker's renovation estimate for our pool.
And the process was also the same. How much can we spend? What's our tentative design? And then we'll go out for bid.
And they levied a specific amount on each taxpayer.
Okay, so this, I'm gonna ask, this is a question, but I'm gonna ask it. Um, because the crowdfunding has been discussed and considered. Let's say, or could we, if you really believe that people would, because I, bonding was off the table for me, right? But if you really believe that the citizens might be able to handle 3 to 6 million in bond authorization for it, if we hit the lower number of that, could a city do, pay for a project like this with half bond, half crowdfunding or anything like that?
We can do all those different things.
So then he would, sorry, uh, Mr. McCauley would have a number to hit in his donation, like, if we said, okay, this is what we're putting up, and then he would say, okay, now I know what number I need to hit to be able to, to tell people, hey, this is the number, this is what we need to make it at, the city will match it. And then the only thing that would be maybe unpopular is that it would be paid through the taxes. But, but that, I don't know, is that a bad idea? I don't, I don't know.
So my, my recommendation would be that we find ways to finance it. No offense to Mr. McCauley, who I would call a friend. We can't count on any money that his group will bring in. Obviously, we have had a conversation about commercial sponsorships and there are ways that absolutely that can happen. And I think that we should continue. Anything you brings in, fantastic. What I'm kind of hearing from a lot of the crowd, and y'all start to confirm this is correct, that y'all believe, looking at Councilman Hunsaker's concept two, dropping a lot of the support, any of the support spaces that we can, and focusing on reusing the existing facilities, building out this, as they call it, outdoor aquatic center. I would suggest dropping the slide off also. That if we did that project, concept two, got a design that we could move forward with this at, at a, in a bond.
I do want to make a comment about the slide. I wouldn't drop off the slide because I remember in conversations, I believe it was with you, Robert, or maybe it was Isaac, that the cost of the slide was absolutely nominal. It is such a tiny amount.
It is. It's completely nominal. I'm not saving any money. That's what's sad.
It doesn't save any money. It's, it was, it's a great idea. It's a really fun thing for very, very little money.
Everybody was like, that we need to not, they got upset about it and it's like, an extra 100 grand.
No, it wasn't, it's not even that. It was, it was under, I don't want to say, it was under $30,000. It, it, it's, it's less than what we pay in toilet paper.
It is.
Parks.
Which also means that it's so small that if we're successful funding this, we can value add it. It, it could get in there.
So why did you pick, I have other things, but why did you pick concept two? Why do you keep going to that one?
I just heard y'all, I'm trying to build consensus for what y'all.
Concept two separates out a baby pool space and shallow space to swimming lanes. And with, Councilman Hunsaker's talked extensively about that in their meetings.
So, Robert, if, um, I know there's a difference between a commercial pool and a, like a municipal pool, correct? Is there, like, as far as, like, well, I know residential, which is private, but I'm saying even if we go, like, if I say commercial pool, is there a distinction between a commercial pool and a municipal pool? Or?
No, they'll, they'll both fall under the Texas administrative code. Um, HOA pools will fall under that same umbrella if they serve more than two homes, which most of them do. So they'll fall under the same Texas administration code.
Like, if somebody brought, um, like a builder and said, hey, this isn't Councilman Hunsaker, this isn't anything, but hey, here's, here's somebody, here's something, like a developer was in here earlier, or someone who works for a developer comes in here and says, hey, here, I can do this for 2, 2 million, I don't know, whatever. I mean, is that something the city would be willing to look at? That, that you guys would be willing to vet if council asks you to do it?
Yeah, absolutely.
But does it still not have to go through the same bidding process as everyone else?
Yeah, I mean, you can vet, you can vet the bid to verify that this is like an estimate, but the, ultimately, the project still has to flow through state law.
Still has to go through bidding. They still have to qualify as a, um, oh my God. They have to qualify as a vendor, show all the qualifications, just like everybody else.
Well, because I'm looking at my little list here of things that we talked about earlier. So if the, if the, the, if the design came in and the opinion, his, he looks at it, he says, you know, these guys, they're good to go, they're, they've got all their qualifications, blah, 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 then they, he'll, the city puts it out to bid. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if, if Councilman Hunsaker was, let's say, way too expensive, even with their least expensive concept, if somebody just came in and said, hey, I might have something here, I might be able to do it. I'm a, I live in JV and I, you know, have, have connect, I don't know. But I'm just saying, like, if that came in, that is something the city would be willing to look at as well to get us a pool if, if that was the case.
Yes, as, as long as they meet the architectural and engineering, engineering standards, absolutely.
So it'd be, is it fair to summarize that council would be okay with moving in the direction of RFQ and the process that needed to move towards concept two in the original location with this, a bond, a, a bond being the expected funding source? Simon, did you get all that?
You're asking me? Can you repeat, can you repeat what you, your summary because it's all garbled?
Yes, because that was, that was what I was asking, if you got all that. Is it fair to summarize that council feels they would be acceptable to moving forward with RFQ based upon getting, something based off concept two in the original location, using bonds to finance the project?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with that.
Bonds still hurt my stomach, but I want our community to have a pool.
I get that.
And after, after the conversation we had about our infrastructure needs and our CIP, it's starting to lean towards that.
So I'm gonna do another thing. We, we try to reach out and, and work correctly, Susan. So Susan Edwards is the bond committee chairman, and you had a comment a second when you said something about Councilman Hunsaker. If you would like a moment to provide that input, I'll give you five minutes to provide that input. Cause you were also very involved in all of the conversations with Councilman Hunsaker.
Well, right now, I'm just wondering what concept two is. Because what I'm looking up right now, it sounds, looks like it's much more of a pool concept than what I think y'all are referring to.
From what I recall from the notes, the concept two was the one voted upon. Was the concept two not the one?
No.
No, no, concept three is the one that was.
Concept three is what was voted on, my apologies.
Concept three is the one that was voted on and it, the aquatic center on that one is a million dollars more. If you want to walk up, I'll take, I'll let you look at it, but. I thought you, when you said something, I thought you had a comment. Can you go to the mic so Simon can hear you? Can you use the mic so Simon can hear you?
Yeah, I'm going to.
So y'all are considering using that concept?
That's what I'm hearing.
And come across, come up with that one at like 6 million, somewhere around 6 million?
That's, that's for the, I mean, to be, to be honest, the support spaces were two. The aquatic was 3.1 or 3.0, and the rest was about 25% overhead.
Okay, so I think the big problem, yes, the price was the, was the major problem why the, the, uh, bond failed. But another big problem is that no one wanted two pools. I never heard at any of our bond committee meetings. I never got any emails. I never got any messages. I never got any papers, any comments. I didn't get anything, and I don't think anyone else did either, that said they wanted two pools. What I did get is that they all wanted a diving board. They all wanted a shallow end. But they didn't want what, what that design has. Almost all of them wanted a pool like we had.
See, and I got the difference.
That design doesn't have it.
I, I understand what she's saying, but the feedback I got from residents was that they did not want to contain, they did not want to continue with the Z shape. They wanted the baby pool, the, they wanted that shallow end, a completely separate thing, and that was recommended by Councilman Hunsaker from a hygiene.
There was another, a lot of hygiene reasons.
So Jennifer, why, if you got that feedback, and I, I don't know who you were getting it from, because I wasn't getting it from that, and I'm still not getting that. Um, and I'm definitely getting now from the younger families, and some have moved away. I hope y'all are realizing that there are families that have moved out of the village, out of Jersey Village already, and there are others that are telling their parents, I want to move. And it's because we don't have a pool. And this is really, really sad. And these are the, these are the kids that are like 10, 11, 12 years old. And of course, the younger ones are too, but, you know, it's when you're 10, 11, 12 year old kids are telling your, their parents they want to move, that's really sad. Now, the younger ones, yeah, they are too. And of course, I'm working with them. Well, I'm working with some older ones too, but, you know, and that's why I was late here today, because I was given swimming lessons. I got over here as quickly as I could. In fact, even the parents said, okay, we're leaving so you can get to that council meeting. But anyway, um, it's sad because they don't have any place to go in between. And that's where they really learn how to swim. Not from swimming lessons. They learn from getting to go to the pool and practice what they learned. They get to go to the, they learn by going to the pool and seeing what other kids are doing. They learn from other kids. Now, like I said, Jennifer, I really, I really do wish I knew why the people wanted the separate pool, because from what I hear from most of these parents is they want it all contained because they have different age kids, and so they don't have to be watching two different pools at the same time.
Where I'm getting this information, aside from individual conversations I've had with people is the fact that it, the pool bond committee voted 5 to 2 in favor of concept three, which was the 10 million or 10 point whatever million dollar pool design, and it is two pools. Um, and that pool bond committee was made up of a wide selection of people from the neighborhood. And I heard from several people, I attended a couple of the meetings, especially the one that, um, when Councilman Hunsaker was presenting their findings on the pool, and. one that, when Councilman Hunsaker was presenting their findings on the pool, and people did in the, oh my gosh, during like citizens' comments, or whatever they're calling them, but that, that was brought up. So for me, I, I think that's, I mean, if you look back at the notes, it was voted on five to two in favor of a two pool concept.
Well, you're correct, it was. Were you at that meeting?
At the one with the vote for the five to two?
Right.
No ma'am, I was not.
Well, it's too bad you weren't, because I wish you could have seen the audience's reaction. They all jumped up, they said, we don't even know why we're here, y'all did not listen to us. That, I, I was shocked, because we hadn't seen that before.
Okay.
But boy, they did, and anyone that was there can testify that that's what happened.
Yep.
They were irate.
They were. Thank you, Susan. I listened to it multiple times. Does anybody have anything further to add?
I mean, I'm not married to a designer or anything, I don't feel as strongly about two pools or one pool or whatever. I, what I do know is, no matter what that pool looks like, it's going to be a brand new pool filled with water and people in it. And so some of those arguments will go away when people start going to the pool. That's maybe being optimistic, so as far as the design, whether it's one or two, people will be happy that we have a pool.
I, I was gonna take a step back from that, sorry for cutting you off. I was just gonna say, there's three or four concepts in there, and the price tag in 2024 dollars, not 25, is, for the aquatic portion, is between 3.0 and 3.25 million dollars. A lot of money still, but we can work toward a design that we all like, it's just, we know what that money will get us, whether it's the same shape or something different.
Yep.
I was just gonna say, I think from what I was hearing on the, the two, five vote, or just in general, people who wanted that other option, was really they just wanted more shade, and they wanted the fade in part for their kiddos, but I think the nostalgia component was also very loud. I've heard more about the Z shape than I have about anything else. The other pool, the, the feedback I heard from that was more about the lanes for swim team. And that was really the book, and that was really my two sides that, I mean, from that I've heard.
When, when you say, sorry, when you say aquatic portion, are you including the pump house?
I'm calling everything that is under the aquatic line items.
Yeah, it's, it's not included, you're gonna have to add that in.
So the pump house would be what, like one million dollars, Robert? I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not a pool builder.
Sorry, yeah, it's, it's a portion of the support spaces, is the outdoor pool mechanical room.
Yeah, if I remember some talks with Austin, you're looking at 600 to a million, depending on the size of the water, pool, and there's a lot of ifs, but at, at a lowest cost, you're talking about 600.
That's would be a separate line item than the three to five million.
Robert, do you have any questions on moving forward?
No idea.
Can I ask if certain audience member has any questions? He came specifically looking for answers, regret, Mr. McCauley?
Mr. McCauley, do you have any questions? Do you know how to move forward?
Well, I will say this, I do like the idea of the same spot, generally the same type of pool, you know, we can argue about little design features here and there, I think that's kind of getting stuck in, in the weeds. I agree that, I think if this went on to a bond vote, five to six million, I think it probably would pass. So I think that's probably as good a plan as any to say, hey, let's put it where it was before, let's get a budget kind of understanding, five to six million, try to put it on the ballot, maybe for this November if we can, and then, to your point, that's the, that's the primary funding mechanism, and then back up to that, hey, if we can scrounge up the money from our citizens, get sponsorships, et cetera, to chip that down to where we don't have to either borrow as much, or we can pay it off quicker, or we don't have to borrow as much when we're building it, I think that's as good a plan as any. My thought on this, at the end of the day, if we want a pool, we're going to pay for it, and same thing with the water, right? Like, water is not a right, it's, 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 you gotta pay for water, it's not something, you know, you get free water, right? I mean, everybody gets free water from the water fountain, but that came from somewhere and somebody's paying for it. And I really like the idea of, in government, you want the cost to be borne by the people that are using whatever the item is, right? Like, if it's water, that's the people who should pay for it. If it's the pool, the people that are going to be using the pool should pay for the pool. So we're either gonna get our taxes raised and pay for it that way, or we're gonna scrounge up the money and, and pay for it out of pocket, one way or the other. I like the idea of like, hey, the people that actually want it, if they want to pay for it, let's put your money where the mouth is and let's do it.
You have reasonable idea, I mean, you came looking for some guidance in where we're headed, do, had we provided enough for you?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if, if we have enough consensus to say that's, I, I think we have kind of a, at least a general, like, you know, maybe we're 80% of the way there, I think that's, that's good. You know, to your point, I don't know that we can raise the full amount, it just kind of depends. At the end of the day, I think we've said that there's about 2,200 households, to fully fund it from households, it, you know, it's going to be a 25 to three grand per household, I don't know that we can get there reasonably, but I think a 500 to a thousand per household target, that's probably more reasonable. Hopefully, we can put a pretty big dent in that, and then, you know, we get some sponsorships as well, essentially that's kind of my, my game plan, so, anyway, thank you.
Can I ask you guys just a real quick question? Have you thought about putting it up at the, you know, the pool was originally at the golf course before you guys sold the golf course the first time to Cameron?
Yeah, there's been some-
Have you got facilities and you've got a restaurant already up there that's struggling?
There, there has been quite a bit of discussion about placing it there, that, that was the location that was considered.
At a golf course?
Haven't?
You're talking about putting the pool at the golf course?
Yeah, that's-
Huh, I have not heard that.
Really?
No. In any of our conversations, it's never been brought up?
Well, I knew that the original pool was-
Oh yeah, I knew originally, like Tenneco or whatever they were called.
So the, the, maybe, maybe that was six, three or four years ago, I know there was some discussion, and there were some comments about how that would be accepted by the golf community.
Well, then, also strategically with the parking lot, the parking and that, because just going there to eat dinner sometimes is, is really challenging, parking, so I could see that being a strategic problem, but again, I go back to, I'm not married to any one location.
And at this point, we're talking about using the original location because of the cost savings of not having to relocate, so, input for you, obviously, you'll do some due diligence in looking at the different locations, but start moving towards an RFQ and go from there. All right, we're gonna move on to mayor and councillor comments, and start off with Michelle.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for staying this long, it is way past my bedtime. I just wanted to announce on tomorrow, the comprehensive plan is meetings, if you just really love meetings and you want to come tomorrow, please come. And also, the Carol Fox ribbon cutting is June 26 at 5:00 PM. I know that there are so many kids chomping at the bit, so I'm very excited for that. Also, happy Father's Day late to all the dads out there, and happy birthday to my sister.
I'll see you Father's Day and raise you a birthday to my son today, so happy birthday, eh? Thank you all of you for coming out. As you've probably seen and maybe heard, city government and this process can be messy. I hope, at the end of the day, it's constructive, and it's slow, and it's slow on purpose, and your feedback is warrant, definitely heard, and quite frankly, it's, it's very welcome, and engagement is welcome, and I hope at the end of the day, even if we disagree, we can agree to disagree amicably, and walk away on, on some things, and always exchange ideas, and always be growing in thought. Check out the new website, and if you have feedback, let us know, we can get it to the right people. There's, once again, it's growing, and if you say this isn't working, or this is cool, you know, we can, we can work on that. Last things, 4th of July is on the 4th of July, parades in the morning, party at night, and more information on that, and then, a party a week later is at the Budget Workshop, and that's really where priorities are identified, and if you can't devote a Friday for it, completely understood. July 1-ish is when that packet should go online, and so read through it, look at the line items, if you have questions or feedback, let us know, and we can work on that. Thank you. And thank you, Simon, for staying up so late.
Simon, you're up.
You're welcome. I appreciate y'all allowing me to participate remotely.
Was that your comment? Or do you have any further comments? Okay.
No, I'm good.
Connie?
Okay, well, thank you to the JV, PD, and Fire Department for all your work, as usual. I'd like to congratulate Jake Daly for his new certification, congratulations. There is, did I say it wrong?
No.
Okay, did I just embarrass him? Oh.
She's got a two bits.
Two bits, you got the same one? Okay, my apologies, congratulations to you as well. We're very proud of you as a city, we really are. Comprehensive Plan Update Committee tomorrow at 6:00. Carol Fox Cutting, 26, Thursday 26 at 5:00, you mentioned the July 4th. I just want to remind everyone, we are your representatives, okay? So please, like Watson set up here, we welcome the, the feedback, we welcome the questions, give us time to digest them, we're happy to do it, and, and like he said, it's, it's, there's a lot of moving pieces, a lot of moving parts, that we're trying to, to conquer it all at one time. So appreciate your patience. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, for your continued help in sorting through the numbers, and looking forward to a calculator.
Jen? I actually just kind of blinked a little bit. I do want to say, same things with Father's Day and 4th of July, and the budget meeting, come out. It's a lot easier to have an informed, an informed opinion versus what I'll call a Facebook opinion, so I would suggest that significantly. Dang, I forgot whatever it was, so I'm just gonna let it go.
Courtney, make sure you put both of them in my congratulations.
Both well deserved. Appreciate everybody that came out, all the comments. Sorry it took till 10:30 at night, but I think we accomplished a lot. And yeah, we, we aren't done, y'all are welcome to go home. But, we're gonna move on to recessing the regular stations. City Council is now going to retire to a closed session at 10:39 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property in Section 551.071, consultations with attorney. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property in Section 551.071, consultations with attorney, a closed meeting to deliberate the potential and possible purchase, exchange, sale, or value of real property, and we will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded.
Okay, real good, so I'll just go ahead and leave here and then connect with the one that Robert sent me? Okay, okay, very good, thank you, both. Thank you, both.
Recrevinging their regular session, the closed session was adjourned at 11:14 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Moving on in the agenda, we have no action to take on the remaining items and adjourn the meeting.